Okay, so I'm just, I'm getting cue from you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Thanks. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2017. We, this is a special meeting. We're located at the community center. It is a discussion and adoption of 2017/18 city goals and program objectives. The time is 3:00. Everybody's here, forgive me, but I'm just kind of getting rolling here. And with that, we do have all council members here and staff. We do have got a quorum, and we can call a meeting to order. We're going to go through some process announcements. I know Dave will do that. We've got one speaker in the audience, and I know I did get contacted from some folks that are going to the WRFCAC meeting. So we can open up with some public comments at the beginning, and then following our discussion, we can open and we can close with public comment. I think there's some people that might want to close to that, come from the WRFCAC over here and do some comments as well. And with that, and it doesn't really preclude us from actually, I know it says adoption, doesn't preclude us from having this on a consent agenda for us to have, and people wanted to have a, make comments, you know, on that as well, but we can talk through that. At any rate, I'll turn it over to Dave, and you can, you know, outline some of the processes, and we'll start through each section.
Okay, great. Thanks. So don't worry, not much is going to go on the screen behind you three gentlemen. Everything that, pretty much everything is in your staff report. It's, that's the goals. The reason we have the screen there is if we get to wordsmithing and things, we can do it right here, and we can look at it, and everybody can give the thumbs up that it's, that it's likely wanted, so that if you would like to, we can, we can have a completed document and adopt it when we depart. So just briefly, the process, we had a study sessions on January 10th and 24th on goals. On January 31st, we had a community goals forum. On February 14th, we had a discussion on the goals at the regular council meeting. On February 28th, the council pulled the goals off of the consent calendar and wanted to review the goals one more time, primarily to reconsider some aspects of goal number one, and decided to do that in a work session, and here we are in that work session on April 4th. So just briefly, sort of bring us all back up to speed, we have four goals. Goal number one, an essential goal, is to achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. Goal number two, also an essential goal, is to complete the WRF project and One Water program. Goal number three, an important goal, is to improve infrastructure and public spaces. And goal number four, an important goal, is to review and update significant city land use plans. I don't intend to read through all of the details of these, but goal number one has a descriptor that, that talks about the city's fiscal situation and how we want to address that over the next eight years. It's an eight-year goal, and that the focus of the goal includes objectives that are related to revenue enhancement, general economic development, cost control, assurance of sound fiscal management policies. And then I've got each of the objectives for goal number one, we've got it blown up there big on the screen in case we need to get into changing, changing pieces of it, and we can do it on the screen. Goal number two is, is all about the WRF project and the One Water program, little shorter duration goal. It's a six-year goal that we intend to complete by July of 2023, which is two years after the scheduled completion date of the new water reclamation facility. That provides us some time to implement other aspects of the One Water plan. Goal number three, the important goal, is to improve infrastructure and public spaces. That is, this is at minimum an eight-year goal, and maybe longer than that, based on, primarily on revenues available for key infrastructure improvements, especially streets and facilities. So this goal includes objectives that are related to streets, bike, pedestrian, parking improvements, city facilities, and the beautification of public spaces. And then goal number four, the important goal, to review and update city, significant city land use plans. This, this is a two-year goal, so we might actually get this one done in two years, that's what we're planning to do, by the summer of 19, which, the summer of 19 should be six months after the coastal commission certifies, Scott? Certifies our new general plan and local coastal program. So, so each of the goals has a slightly different duration and a very different focus, and the primary interest was to, there might be some discussion on, on some parts of goals two, three, and four, but the primary interest was to take one more look at goal one because of its importance, perhaps do some prioritization or some other adjustments to that. So we'll go back to goal number one, and just to review briefly, goal number one has, I think it's one, two, three, seven, eight different objectives. The first one is a little bit broad, and that was, that was by intention, not necessarily able to, able to be measured, but really includes some of the less measurable, but still very important aspects of economic development, primarily that any development is, and fiscal sustainability is consistent with the character and the vision of the community, and is consistent with our economic development strategic plan that you'll be, we'll be seeing now at the end of this month. The, the second objective B is specifically focused on Morro Bay Power Plant. Objective C is, is specifically focused on, and so each of these also, I should just sort of note, might have a different staff lead focus. So for example, B primarily be Scott and I with Akani on any interest in Morro Bay Power Plant. C, which is increasing shoulder season and off-season TOT, is a tourism marketing function primarily. D, which is to bring to the council decision, for decision, potential incentive programs, including a TOT rebate program for renovation and upgrade of some existing hotel stock. E focuses on facilitating private revitalization or redevelopment activities that result in planning approval for a 3% increase in the number of hotel rooms in the city, with priority placed on three and four-star properties to better balance our stock. F was take proactive action to facilitate revitalization of underused parcels and vacant parcels in the, in the business districts. G is to research and bring to council consideration various aspects of parking management, including paid parking as a source of revenue. And finally, H is to evaluate opportunities for new revenue sources, including possible marijuana tax and other tax measures, and cost control approaches that includes a staffing review. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think we'll probably open it up for a grand discussion back and forth on, on goal number one.
Sure, and I think we can, we do have a few folks, so just for some of the late entries as far as public coming in, we can open up for public comment, and we'll close for public comment. So if there's anyone that would like to speak prior to the discussion, there's a microphone up there, you can do that. And then at the end of this, we'll go through public comment as well, so take your pick. I'm looking at three people out in the audience. Come on, okay, good. Come on up, introduce yourself, and we don't have a timer, but I'll let you know.
I'll keep it very brief. My name is Adam Pinteditz. I'm the Director of Government and Community Relations at Ethnobotanica, a medical cannabis collective serving patients in Morro Bay, and a provider of clean, green, certified medication. I just wanted to say that I'm really appreciative that this is all moving forward, and particularly that item D in section one includes taxation of cannabis, and I would urge the council to prioritize establishing a tax for cannabis. And I would also, and I say that because we are prepared to, to do business here and, and generate revenues and continue serving patients here on a larger scale than we have. And I would urge also the council to consider alternatives. I know, generally speaking, a taxation measure has to go before the voters, and so I would urge that options be considered in terms of alternatives such as development agreements or fees that would appropriately compensate the city for the administrative requirements, and also help generate some development opportunities or, and/or revenues until a tax can be established. So that's all I've got. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. And without further public comment, I'll just close public comment at this time and bring it back to council for discussion, and maybe start towards Matt over there. Matt, do you want to start out on goal number one? You want to just go through goal number one? Good to go? Okay, all right. Marlaus?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to revisit the goals. I think this is one of the most important things that the council does. It establishes the policy, it drives our budget, and I think we really need to get it right. And I also think that words are important, so I think we need to read carefully and make sure that this is exactly what we want to do. So with that preface, I have written, rewritten goal number one, along with all of the objectives.
Cool.
And, but let me begin with the description, and then I'll tell you the logic behind what I've done. First of all, the description I have is this is, this essential goal recognizes the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level our community expects while simultaneously maintaining strong financial management practices. The recent decision by the Calpers Board to lower expectations for future investment returns means increased employee pension costs in the future for all California communities, including Morro Bay. This goal focuses on fiscal actions needed to increase revenues as well as to contain costs. And the reason I have that description is I believe that our budget is going to be driven more and more in the future by the Calpers decisions that the board makes, and possibly increased reductions in the discount rate. And so we need to be prepared for that, and I wanted to make sure that we include that because I think that is a major driver of the way we're moving forward. So I also, the emphasis that's in the current description on general fund revenues are around 25% below requirements, some members of our community interpret that to mean that we have a budget shortfall, or that we're in bankruptcy. And so I think rather than emphasizing that aspect of it, we need to balance that, yes, we aren't funding services to the level that we'd like, that's true, but I don't think we have to mention a number in there. And remember, these goals are going to be on the website. They're, the community is going to see them, and I just don't want them to get the wrong idea because we do have a balanced budget right now, and we do have a healthy reserve right now, and so the problem is coming in the future. And yes, we do need to increase revenues, but I also think that in the long run, we're not going to be able to do it just with increased revenues. So I think we're going to have to look at some cost control measures, and it makes sense to me to start now to at least look at what those alternatives are. So that was why I rewrote the description.
So, Dave, I think we, did we talk about having the ability to type these out and have them on the screen as we're going? So, or, I was looking at Lori because I know she's like super quick typer. Okay, all right, then Dave's ready to go, too. So.
I don't, did.
Yeah, so I mean, it would probably be helpful to type it out, and then we can, you know, we can just have, then we'd have it visible as we go through that. Is everybody good with that? I think that'd be, it would be helpful for me as we, as we go through that. And then are there any other comments on kind of the description? Does anybody have any added comments or thoughts on, on the description for goal number one? I mean, I know, we'll start by placing it up there, but were there added comments that people had, different comments on the description as well, and I'll, I'm going to just kind of circle around, and then John, and then Red.
But I just heard it, but I haven't seen it. I just, I'm a visual. So maybe you could read it again, and, and, Marlaus, I appreciate what you did, but could you read it again, or do you have a copy?
I have a copy.
Oh, great. Could I look at a copy?
Yeah, or Dave can type it up, and you can turn it around.
Okay. You can type on that. And then you have a copy you can read as well.
The, the, the emphasis that I heard was that the major economic or financial issue was mainly Calpers, and, and my word mainly, and I think you emphasized Calpers as the issue. And, and I would just add that I think it's broader than that. I think that the city has been behind for a number of years in the ability to diversify revenue sources, so I'm looking for some additional language there. Secondarily, I, I also think that providing for a basic capital replacement budget, we've not been able to fund that in the past, nor does it look like we have the ability to do that in the future. So I had added some verbiage, I didn't write anything, but a concept that was dealing with that. And then also, keeping up with wage, salary, and benefit expected increases in the future, which I think might just outpace the recent past, and that will be a financial challenge as well. So I don't know how you wordsmith that, I'm more of a bullet point kind of a person. So if somehow we could add those, I like what you said, but add those conceptually to it to broaden the public's understanding of what I think you've stated very eloquently are the concerns, makes some sense to me. The last thing would be the essential, and I, I don't think you touched that, or maybe you, I can't remember what you said, but, but the part about maintaining sound fiscal practices with regard to finance, I want to emphasize and make sure that that remains vis-à-vis our, our audit and responding to that, and having the infrastructure in place and the, and the staffing in place to deal with that, et cetera. So I think that's very important for finances in the future. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Red?
Yes, I wanted to say, great job, Marlaus, for taking this approach. And John, I think you are correct in particularly the capital replacement and looking at the, the salaries. And I have mixed feelings about specifically mentioning Calpers as, as a, as a challenge because, as John said, we have a lot of challenges, and, and certainly catching up with past deferred expenses is one of those.
Okay, and I know Dave's typing away, it's going to be up on the screen in a minute. I had some similar comments, though I think as I was looking at the descriptor here, I picked up on basic, the basic framework that was in the original descriptor, and I just wrote something to the effect of the essential goal recognize that the city has been living within its means, and we have. We've, we've been, you know, we've had balanced budgets, but we also recognize that we don't generate enough revenue annually to properly fund street paving and the basic services for the community. I think that was some of the things. And then, and this is the one, and I, I recognize this as well, and I think I've even had the conversation with Dave on the 25%, because not until we had our forecasting tool did we actually, you know, play with the numbers and have all the graphs and everything that we've had that's been helpful, but it's a pretty powerful tool, so it kind of lends itself to a greater discussion, which kind of opened up the, hey, if we want to get to all the street paving, all the capital improvement programs, capital investments and things like that, we're about 25% short on that. And I, and I think it's interesting to actually identify it, but when you do articulate that, it's a mixed feeling for the community on, hey, are we in a deficit? Are we, are we going bankrupt, which is not the case? But perhaps maybe the 25% is just to identify that, hey, if we were to work towards that goal, that 25% would be kind of the target. Those are, those are some of the comments that I had written down with this descriptor as well, and I'm kind of, yeah. So I think Dave's going to put that up there, and then, so it's, we might have to turn around a little bit, but I think we can, we can manage.
So the, I think I got this right. I'm going to hand this back to Marlaus to check my work. So minor change to the, to the wording of the first sentence there, and then, I'm sorry, the second sentence should be in green. So green is an addition, red is a strike. Ooh, sorry about that. Let me just correct that. So then it adds the, essentially why we have issues right now, and then takes out the part about, sort of, some of the things about where we're going, I guess, on the 25% issue, and then, and then adds sort of a, rolls part of that into a small, a sentence there at the end. So if I could, I, I'll just provide a sort of a management observation. Two is, one, I certainly agree that being able to communicate to the community why we're in certain situations is important, and in fact, the Bay News article that Craig and I just finished, that'll be out in two days, specifically goes into detail about Calpers and how that's, what the issue is there. I, I'm not sure that the why is essential in the description of the goal, that's one thought. More concerning, I guess, from, from perspective is, I don't see a, a metric in the goal. So the, the previous goal said, make up 25% of our revenues over eight years. This doesn't set any measurement out for us to achieve.
So I was just trying to get back to what you had written down.
I was just going to say, this, what you have up there that you crossed out is not what I have, that I'm looking at right here.
Can you read through, can you read through that again?
Well, no, 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 I don't mean the part that, that I just said. I meant the part that you have up on the screen is not the same as what I'm looking at here.
Yes, I'm sorry. So what I did is I, I took the goal the council had already approved, or already, the final draft goal, I added in green the things that you added, and I struck out and read what was struck out from the previously, from the previous final draft.
May I? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm just reading, what my text says is, as of January 2017, our general fund revenues are around 25% below requirements to deliver services the community deserves. This goal centers around economic development and fiscal actions, et cetera, et cetera, and that target a 25% increase in revenues. I'm happy with, so I.
So sorry, the piece of paper that you gave me is not the one you're reading off of, that.
I'm reading off of the document that has what was approved or what we read on February 28th as goals and objectives.
Right. And so you, your sheet, Marlaus, was your, was what?
Yes, I know. I, I realize that, I'm aware of that. I'm just pointing out that what you X-ed out is not what my text said on your old document. So I'm wondering if you changed it.
So it, the way I read that is.
But let's, 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 let's go on, because that's, I'm, I. You have what I said up there.
So, yeah, so I, I don't read exactly what you read before, I'm just curious. Could you read what you read before?
No, what, no, let's, let's move on, because what we're really talking about is how we want to change it, if we want to change the description, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of irrelevant if there are some changes in the wording from what was there.
Okay, well, I, I thought that was what we were looking at, trying to change some of the description.
Yes, and the last part is in green.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll just add that it doesn't incorporate, maybe it's not relevant, but anything that I laid out, I, I don't think this is just a Calpers issue.
No, I think we're just starting from this, right?
We're starting?
Starting from this, and now we're going to add what.
We were just talking about, sorry, I think what we started out with was just the descriptor of goal number one, and so that descriptor that's, that Dave has up there is, Dave, help me out, I think what I, what I read up there is the basic, is the original descriptor that was lined out in red. What's in green is what Marlaus was suggesting adding, and then the, the black is what the original language was. Is that right?
So this is, red and black is word for word from the staff report, which was the final.
That was their.
Goals and objectives that went to the council on February 28th.
Right.
That was removed from consent.
Okay.
That's what's in black and red.
Okay.
And then, Marlaus, when you gave me your, your sheet.
Right, right.
I scratched out in red anything that you hadn't included.
Right.
And I added in green the things that you had, so we could see what you were proposing to remove and what you were proposing to add.
Right. I got you now.
So is it consistent?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is it consistent, then?
Yes.
And then, and then John?
I don't think it's all-inclusive. I think, again, I'll say it's not just a Calpers issue, or I'd call it a pension issue. It doesn't speak to the inability to fund any realistic capital budget, which is a huge chunk that's been missing and will continue to be missing. It doesn't speak to keeping up with wage, salary, and benefit increases in the future, which will probably accelerate, exclusive of pension, and it doesn't speak to revenue diversification with regard to the sources of revenues that we receive for the city. And, and so, again, that makes it, to me, and I think it's important, look like just a Calpers issue, and I don't think it is.
I would agree with you.
So this is, you know, this is, well, when we have the advantage, we can start kind of crafting and discussing what we want to do, and are there any other comments to that? You know, so basically, John, John was adding some things, and then, so if we're going to start adding some language to this thing, and we'll, we'll start on it. Matt, go ahead.
I think in terms of this initial descriptor, in terms of adding some of the verbiage that Marlaus and John are talking about, I think you can do that in a general way because you're mentioning this, this level of services. I agree with what Dave is saying in terms of that 25% number. I think our, our Morro Bay residents, they need to see that in black and white, that number. So I agree with what Dave's saying in terms of, it's rather than being just general in terms of the verbiage in that first descriptor, if we put that hard number in, and I like your suggestions also, Jamie, in terms of listing, I forget, you said streets and roads and?
I just said the essential goal recognize that the city has been living within its means.
Okay.
And then, however, the city does not generate enough revenue annually to properly fund street paving.
And, but then.
And, and basic services for the community.
And so I would agree with putting words like that into the descriptor. John, I think in terms of number, letter A, in terms of some of the words that you're asking to, that you'd like to be put in there about the different pensions and the wages in terms of economic development strategic plan, and then going down, I think some of those, those words could be put into letter A, because I'm, I would be hesitant in making our descriptor so large that it becomes so general and too obtuse.
Yeah, yeah.
But then looking at A through H, I do believe we can put those words that I think almost all of us are seeing, they fit within those categories. So instead of, I would, I would advocate right now, instead of reinventing the wheel and making it too big and too vague, that we look in terms of putting those in there, my suggestion.
Okay. So that's the trick in, in going through this process, and, but, you know, we're in, we're in this environment to kind of go back and forth and kind of retype things, and, and hopefully it's just this one that we're getting through because we have four more to get through, so.
A suggestion?
Pardon me, yeah, go ahead.
A suggestion, description, the essential goal recognizes the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level a community our size would expect, along with the importance of strengthening and maintaining strong financial management practices, period. Major issues of concern include the inability to, the possible inability to meet Calpers funding in the future, no realistic capital budget, wage and salary and benefit increases in the future, and the lack of revenue diversification, period.
Streets.
Pardon me?
Got to have streets in there.
Yeah, streets, you could put streets, too. And, and the 25%, I bet you I could do a variable and make it 28% or 23%, and I don't think you should have a number in there, I just think you should leave that out, just call it significant. And, and true to what Matt said, I, I don't want to make these objectives because I have objectives to reach these basic goal, this. because I have objectives to reach these basic goal, this basic goal. So, um, these are not really my objectives. And so just putting it in words like that just outlines, I think, the four or five things that are the most important or the big things that, you know, we need to look at.
Really, as you're reading that, the, John, and going back and we are going back and forth a little bit. And hopefully as we're all going to be going back and forth through this one and talk through it. The essential goal recognizes the city has been living within its means. I, I think that's a good lead in statement because as we look at the goal, we can identify, hey, we've been living with what we have, but here's what we, where we need to go. That's the only thing I, yeah, that's the only thing I would, I would think of when I read that. Because one, um, it's good, we, we need to set the goal, but you know, our community is also looking at. So we do need to message that a little bit too and, and understand that hey, we have been living within our means, we have been balancing our budget, but this is where we need to target.
You might be able to get in the CalPERS thing with a nod to that in that statement. Because we can't continue to live within our means as we have been going forward. So you might say we've been able to live within our, in our means, but due to recent CalPERS actions and other issues, must make changes in order to, you know, continue providing services at the current level.
Hey, comment?
You could call that, um, because of impending future significant financial implications such as one, two, three, four, whatever they are. Just make it a sentence.
Mr. Head, when you, when you, um, talk about 25% and whether it was 28 or 23, you said no number. Did you mean on the, on the requirement side, but yes, have a number on the target side? Or?
I think it, it's an objective and not, it should be not included in the goal statement. I think it, you could make an objective that says we want to increase our bottom line by X percent. That is defined by what the needs are in the future. But, um, to state that as of January, absolutely, we are 25%, it says around 25% below requirements. Really depends upon how you look at it. What, what is the true capital budget need? Well, it might be 2 million, might be four, might be six.
I agree with that. I was looking at the second.
Yeah, that's what I.
I was looking at the second use of 25% which said to, um, that target a 25% increase in revenues for the future. That, that perhaps taking out the, how far behind we are, whether it's 25 or 23 or 28, but perhaps including a metric of where this goal is trying to get us. Since I've given something for you to hold me accountable to because otherwise in two years, we could declare victory that we've increased revenue 2%.
I guess I'm more concerned that I don't feel the need to measure the, um, goal number one, but more importantly, measure the objective surrounding goal number one. Because the objective, the realization of achieving the objectives will realize the goal. So you don't need to measure, you don't measure both usually. It's one or the other, and it's usually the objectives that are measurable. At least in my experience, so.
Red.
And maybe putting that 25% in objective A would satisfy the deficit that we've noted that, that that's not measurable.
Okay. So can we take a stab at the descriptor and see if we can plug in some? Yeah. So folks out there viewing, you know, thanks for being flexible with this. Yeah, this is a good way of doing it. It will take some time. We're going to plug through some, some language and discussion. And we've got a few more people that have joined us in the audience. So just reminding folks that we are going to do public comment at the conclusion. We've just started with the, um, goal number one. And we're getting, we're discussing the initial descriptor on that. And then once we get through this descriptor, we can start moving on to some of the objective languages in there. And then as we're, as, as Dave's typing away on that and we're looking through some of that, I don't know if it's helpful to have other discussions while you're doing that, Dave, or just kind of work with it, work, work together as we're going through that.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
When we, I'm trying to remember what we specifically voted on when we, I thought we approved the remainder of the objectives and goals, or did we pull them all?
I thought we just pulled them all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I didn't bring the record on that, but I, I believe we just pulled them all and brought it back.
That's my recollection also, yeah.
And so as we're looking at the, the screen up there, the audience may not be able to look at it, but there has been, um, some feedback from Caltrans that, um, the Pfeiffer Bridge on Highway One is moving ahead at a pretty rapid pace. So, um, the CalCog meeting that I went to last meet, last week in Monterey, as the SlowCog Board Representative, there's obviously all the transportation professionals and, and organizations within California. There's the other COGS and our Caltrans representatives were, um, very pleased and impressed at the pace at which they're going to get Pfeiffer Bridge reconstructed by the end of the year. So that was quite surprising news, but good. So it's, it's often sometimes takes a little bit longer to get through some projects like that, but.
Did they tell you how they're going to do that?
You know what, um, I guess with declaration of, with emergency declarations, SEQA, there's SEQA modifications and how they can get through projects. But they have their crews and engineers that are working expeditiously at getting that done. And I just got some interesting feedback that they're, um, moving, moving ahead pretty quickly. So that bridge reminded me of that, so.
And the funding is available too. That's the other thing.
They're, they're, the state's doing it, yeah.
Here's a initial edit, and I stress initial. This essential goal recognizes the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level our community expects while simultaneously strengthening and maintaining strong financial management practices. The goal recognizes that we have been living within our means, unable, for example, to pave streets and replace important facilities, but that we due to CalPERS actions and other cost issues are unable to continue living as we have in the past. This goal centers around economic development and fiscal actions, revenue enhancement, public funding measures, cost control and sound fiscal management practices that target a 25% increase in revenues while ensuring sound financial management practices are in place. Oops, sorry, this. There's a couple stray words in there and I've still got the 25% in here. I didn't get to editing that, but thought you could look at the first two paragraphs. The wording in the first paragraph is a little concerning, I think. Recognizes the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level while simultaneously, it sounds like we can't fund while simultaneously strengthening. I think we had along with the importance of, does that? So the.
Was that first sentence that you wanted in there?
Oh, I, he, he dovetailed it in following the lead in. I just, I, I opened with the essential goal recognizes the city has been living within its means. And then however, the city does, does not generate enough revenue annually to properly fund street paving and all basic services for the community. He's, you know, got this essential goal, the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level our community expects along with the importance of strengthening and maintaining strong financial management practices. The goal recognizes that we have been living within our means, comma, unable, for example, to pave streets and replace important facilities, but that we're, um, but that we due to CalPERS actions and other cost issues, we are unable to continue, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn that off. That was rude. Pardon me. Sorry, note, note to everybody, electronic devices off. That was rude, sorry. So it's not up there anymore, so I can't read.
But the reason I pointed that out, I like the brevity of your beginning initial sentence. And I understand how it's put together, spliced in there. But that brief sentence pretty much says in a very, you know, five or six words, we're doing all right, however.
However.
Um, and so, I mean, you can take out the however, whatever that first five or six sentences was. That was a strong, basic sentence that laid it out.
Yeah.
Let me, let me adjust that and see what we can come up with.
Thanks, Matt.
Is there any way to keep that screen?
Unfortunately, this thing is set up weird right now. I'll try to, try to figure that out. Recognizes.
Good up there? I just mirror the screen.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yep, this is good. There we go.
Thank you.
Can you all read the green? You probably can't. I'm going to change this green to black since we've gone beyond.
Yeah.
Okay. That's because we've been living with, that we have been living. That. The city. So that first paragraph captures what Jamie and Matt were just discussing.
That, that last piece doesn't make sense. It doesn't tie together, the along with, it doesn't make sense to me.
Are you, I couldn't hear you.
The essential, the, I'm trying to.
Gosh, damn.
The essential goal recognizes the city has been living within our means, but is not currently able to fund all basic services and the requirements at the level our community expects.
So why don't we say period, it also?
It's a run on sentence.
Right, it also recognizes.
That's better. The importance of strengthening, that's, yeah, that's good, Dave. Thank you.
Importance of strengthening, maintaining strong financial management practices.
The goal.
Okay, so we're in the middle of editing here, so.
Yeah.
This was all to do with, um, living within our means.
So it's more, okay, I, I, I don't want to be redundant, but it's more than just replacing capital facilities. It's a capital budget across the board, so.
Do both to our.
Are you on the monitor? Or how are you monitoring this for us, for the audience? Since we don't have a monitor here, it's kind of hard to tell what.
We were asked not to do that.
Asked to do what?
We were asked not to take a video of it.
Oh, oh.
No, of, of the, of this. He was just asking if there's a monitor. There's usually a monitor so we can see what's.
Yeah, I mean, are you, since we don't have a monitor, or is the screen up or are we?
It's just a shot of the.
Okay. All right, okay.
Do both to our previous inability to fund important services such as streets and replacements of important facilities and the lack of a capital budget?
Capital, was it a capital budget or capital replacement?
Yeah, capital budget, it doesn't, yeah. We can get into a lot of descriptions here if we were trying to.
And the only reason I bring up, I think, John, you, it's, your comments were in terms of covering the fiscal sustainability of the city and the capital, did you say capital budget or capital replacement?
I said capital budget in general, but, which is fine. It's not just facilities, it's, it's IT equipment, it's your desk, it's all the stuff that goes along with that. You know, um, vehicles, there's a whole host of things that we haven't been able to address and replace. I don't know, would you call it your capital budget or what would you call it?
I maybe want to clarify, it's the, the general fund funded capital budget.
Yeah.
Just to provide some clarity.
Sure, yeah.
So this might get close. Now it is, do both to our previous, do both to our previous inability to fund important services such as streets and the replacement of key facilities and the lack of a capital budget, plus the impact of recent cost concerns, especially escalating CalPERS costs. We are unable to continue living as we have in the past. So it sort of ties back into the beginning.
Dave, you might want to throw in general fund capital budget or adequate capital budget because we do have a capital budget as a whole, so.
It's getting, it's getting pretty big there.
Ah, come on.
Are streets a service?
Uh, I just noticed that the statement about some controlling costs was out of the descriptor. And it seems to me that we are going to have to somehow look at that. It isn't just increasing revenues. Yep, cost control.
And I'm about to add back in, thank you, the, um, the duration and focus elements which we took off. So cost control is in the focus and economic development, well, cost control is there in the last, it's right, it's right here.
Yeah. That's part of the original, um, goal statement.
Where you say do, it should say do both to our previous inability. That's just better English, I think, maybe.
Where's that, please?
Uh, fifth sentence. Do both to our previous.
Oh, do, okay, got it.
Do both our previous, does it make sense? Yeah.
Do, but yes, to our previous inability. I saw something down here that seemed like a problem. And the lack of a capital budget.
Put an N there, Dave.
Of an, add, yep, thank you.
As long as we're being picky, where you have the, um, where you have the CalPERS, in front of CalPERS, you have an M dash. And after the Cal, especially calculating CalPERS, you have an N dash to make it equal. Or no, that make it an M, okay, yeah, or vice versa, there you go.
What were those called? Was there a distinction between those?
Yeah, one's long, one's short.
I, I got that. You, you had a name for them.
M dash and an N dash. And one is to show if it's kind of a, like a parenthetical remark. So that's why you put an M dash. And I would argue right now that you'd want an M dash there instead of an N dash.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I mean, we're, we're like this.
The letter M dash?
It would be EM or EN.
Got it. Got it, got it.
Thank you.
You said M, I was thinking Ms. Dash, that spice that we use?
You could do that also, that might sweeten it up, or everybody would like this better more.
Okay, so, any comments on what the description, how it's reading, and where we're at from council, Red, John, Matt, Marlis?
Craig pointed out that we wanted to specify that the capital fund is the general fund, capital fund.
Would everybody like to see that? An adequate general fund capital budget? Would you like me to read it once more? Okay, here it comes.
There you go.
So I'll just read through it once as everybody's reading it, just to hear the flow of it too. This essential goal recognizes that the city has been living within our means, but is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level our community expects. It also recognizes the importance of strengthening and maintaining strong financial management practices. Do both to our previous inability to fund important services such as streets, maybe say, street paving, streets and replacement of key facilities, and the lack of an adequate general fund capital budget. Plus the impact of recent cost concerns, especially escalating CalPERS costs, we are unable to continue living as we have in the past. This goal centers around economic development and fiscal actions, revenue enhancement, public funding measures, cost control, and sound fiscal practices that target a 25% increase in revenues while ensuring sound fiscal management practices are in place. Duration, this is an eight-year goal, the city intends to achieve fiscal sustainability by 2025. Focus, this goal includes objectives related to revenue enhancement, general economic development, cost control, and assurance of sound fiscal management practices.
Can I ask a question? Dave, in terms of, or actually, everybody, the words cost control and sound fiscal practices, are they different, are they the same? So you would say them differently?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. And then, in the next sentence down, or continuing, after the next comma, while ensuring sound fiscal management practices. Okay, is, do we want all the cost control, sound fiscal practices, and sound fiscal management practices? Do we need all three of those?
We have quite a bit in there right now.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you could conceivably take away this portion, while ensuring sound fiscal management practices, because we say exactly the same thing up at the beginning, maintaining strong financial management practices, and then right here we say sound fiscal practices, which are the same.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll just take that out. So this goal centers around economic development and fiscal actions, those actions are revenue enhancement, public funding measures, cost control, and sound fiscal, probably have management practices in there, that target a 25% increase in revenues.
Dave, could you define, in your words, what fiscal sustainability is? Or Craig?
It means we can pay the bills, both the current bills and the bills that are associated with other goals that we currently can't pay, such as street enhancement, facility enhancement, and that we can do that year over year over year while covering all of our other obligations.
Would it also include building sound fiscal reserves? Would you include that as part?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have said, maintaining the general fund reserve level set by the council.
Any comments? Matt, Marlis, good to go. Okay, we're gonna check this box on the description for goal number one, cool, thank you. And then now into the body of the objection, objectives. You want to lead us off on the first one there?
So the first objective, again, this was intentionally sort of broad, we went back and forth on this, I recall being on the mobile phone to Craig and Dana while I was driving over the pass to Tahoe one day, on whether this should be in here and how, because it's not necessarily measurable, but it does sort of give the character and flavor of the type of development that we're, and the constraints of that development perhaps that we're interested in thinking about. So, it says, working with local and regional businesses and groups, so that gets in, working with the chamber, with Economic Development Corporation, with merchants, with all others, promote a balanced economic development approach, consistent with our economic development strategic plan. So, to me, that balanced approach means we're not all eggs in one basket, but we are looking at head of household businesses, other kinds of businesses, tourism businesses, about, broad and balanced, that retains, expands, and attracts businesses, that's BRE, business retention expansion, for a strong, stable, complementary, and diverse business environment, including tourism, coastal resources, development, redevelopment, and conservation, that honors the character of our community and is consistent with our community vision. And again, to me, this sort of sets the parentheses, or the parameters of what is appropriate economic development and more obey, and what may not be.
Okay, any discussion on this, on A, on this first one? I'll, we can go back around, I'll start with Matt again, if he wants to lead off on that, or, okay, Marlis, and then I'm gonna switch to Red next time.
It's unfortunate that we haven't seen the economic development strategic plan, and so when I looked at this one, I actually rewrote it to say, consider the proposed strategies in the economic development strategic plan, and take action on those most likely to generate revenues in the short run, and then I said, work with local and regional businesses and groups to retain, expand, and attract diverse businesses that are consistent with our community and its vision and values. So I took out some of that language, because I'm assuming that some of those strategies are in that plan, and not having seen that plan, I thought it was more important to focus on what the plan contains and take action appropriately, so that was my thinking on that.
Okay, so could you just read that one once more, just so I have...
I said, consider the proposed strategies in the economic development strategic plan, and take action on those most likely to generate revenues in the short run. And then followed up with some...
And then working with the local and regional?
Yeah, and then I just shortened that a bit, because I thought that was, but, you know.
Okay, any other comments?
I liked Marlis' shortened version, and I just had one question, how do we measure this one? How would you measure it if we accepted it?
As I said previously, this one is, by definition, not measurable, except in the exception, if we are, it's measurable by not doing things that are inconsistent with this, for example, not working with local, regional businesses, not considering our local businesses are already here, putting all of our eggs in one basket, and not looking at a balanced approach, doing things that are inconsistent with our community vision and values.
Red?
To me, this stands alone, and I'm not sure, I think, John, you're looking for a number?
A measurable outcome, that's what I was looking for, what's the take home? What do I, in other words, you know, in my world, you never write an objective that's not measurable and/or that doesn't have an expected outcome associated with it, and I'm trying to understand what the work product is.
Okay, good, because the action is promote, so how do you measure the success of that promotion, I guess, so.
So...
Yeah, if we want a metric, we need to recognize that it is missing, and figure out if that's what we want. If we just want a general statement, this, it seems okay to me.
I'll just say, staff was going back and forth on this one, we didn't have this in here originally, and we added it in because we thought the council would want something that generally described what sort of, you know, the climate that we were working within for economic development. If you'd like to pull this out completely, because it's not measurable, that's fine.
I'll make one comment on this, and I know the closing, thanks, Dave, because I, and great to discuss what we were measuring, but when I, the closing statement saying redevelopment and conservation honors the character of our community and is consistent with our community vision, I'm not sure, I think initially when we discussed this, I made a general statement in that we're not, we're not just opening the floodgates to development without, you know, recognizing, you know, our community character, so I just, you know, understanding that we wanted to generate revenues, we just weren't gonna, you know, open the doors and just say, hey, it's open to whatever we want to do, that's what I recall my statements were, I didn't actually articulate this, but when I saw it come in, I thought this was more of a framework statement, so, you know, I agree, there's not necessarily a metric to it, but it does kind of outline, I guess, what those parameters, I guess in your terms, parentheses of what we want to make sure we value as we focus on promoting or anything else, so, I think it's kind of nice to be able to have it articulated in there, just to make sure that we, you know, this isn't just, you know, as I said in the initial meeting, hey, we're just not opening up the floodgates here just because we want to generate revenue, because I think we need to be thoughtful about it, so I think that's what our community expects as well, so, I think mostly it's a general statement, and there's not necessarily metrics to it, but those are my comments, Red, I see your mic is on.
Yeah, and as I look at it more, this looks more like part of our focus rather than an objective, because it describes what we want the goal to accomplish, without specifying the number that's associated with it.
I don't disagree, and we were trying to keep the goal descriptor manageable, and the focus manageable, and to make it a true focus, and what we settled on was to capture this tonal issue in the very first objective underneath this goal, as if it would inform how we went about the rest of the objectives, so don't disagree at all, it's more overarching, we were trying to keep the descriptor of the goal and the focus of the goal back in the previous slide, to one paragraph, and not two different.
So in the description, the description, I think we've agreed to, could we insert this A into the focus, and then move on to B, C, D, E, F, G, and then just kind of expand the focus to include that language? Is that, is that something?
You could, from my perspective, that's not very focused.
Okay.
I mean, just as you look at the focus of two, three, and four, they are pretty crisp things, it says what this goal encompasses, not how we're gonna go about it and feel it, but that's my sense.
Okay.
Marlis?
Yeah, well, that's why I narrowed the focus of this to the economic development strategic plan, that we've paid for a plan, and I would think we would have an objective that relates to somehow implementing that plan, and that was why I wrote that the way I did, narrowing it in on that plan and implementation of it.
Could you read that back so I can, we can put it on the screen and...
Yeah, consider the proposed strategies in the economic development strategic plan, and take action on those most likely to generate revenues in the short run. And then I shortened that to say, with a semicolon, work with local and regional businesses and groups to retain, expand, and attract diverse businesses that are consistent with our community and its vision and values, and I was assuming that the economic development plan was going to focus on that, attracting businesses to our community. Because if we move this up into the focus, and I still would like an objective on that economic development strategic plan.
I mean, I think we've captured everything in the front, we can, you know, trim some of the end.
Where I tried to, I put Marlis' focus on the EDSP upfront, which is great, and then said, in considering all of the following objectives, work with, so that sort of notes that the purpose of this is to address our approach with all of these other objectives, from new hotels to revenues and all those things, for all of those things, work with local and regional businesses and groups, promote a balanced economic development to promote a balance, goes on.
I don't think you need all of that language in there, but, you know...
So we could take out, after, we can just not define the diverse business environment, and take all that out.
Right, that honors the character of our community.
Any comments? Matt? You're okay? Red? Okay, John?
I guess so, yeah, we're not gonna measure that, yeah, I guess that's fine.
John, do you think, in terms of the economic development plan, as long as it's coordinated with that, that would be some sort of measurement, yes, or no?
Yeah, if we achieved the, if we took action and achieved the...
Strategy.
Strategy, that could be a measurable objective. I was looking for something like, you know, that it's hard to tell how much it contributes, but, you know, contributes to an increase of 10% in general revenues or what have you, but I don't think we can do that.
And the only reason I bring that, because Red had the comment about this objective is so much about promotion, and how nebulous that is to measure, but however, your point about measuring it as a goal, as an objective, you're like, okay, that makes sense, and it seems to me there, in that economic development special plan, there might be some sort of, by using those points within it, that would be a measurable metric.
Exactly, I mean, if we invested in the economic development strategy and we're implementing some of those recommendations, then that's the metric, yeah.
And like Marlis said, we haven't seen it, so we don't know, yeah, but yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anything else, Red?
Yeah, and I think it's, the important part of this, to me, is honoring the character of our community and consistent with our community vision, because that's gonna help guide us as we consider development plans and ideas, I'm thinking particularly about the Market Plaza, that we don't want to lose the character that our people prize, so to me, that's a metric that I can understand and work So to me, that's, that's a metric that I can understand and work with.
Good. Thank you. If we're good there, we'll continue on to the next objective. Am I getting, getting consensus there? Looks like everybody's good on that. We can move on to B.
So this, this goal is all about the power plant, and it is about pursuing opportunities and relationships that may result in the demolition and reuse of the power plant. It is, it too is challenged in its metrics. But, and from the staff perspective, we had this in here because I, my sense was that there was council interest in ensuring that there was a strong staff focus on power plant potential redevelopment. But we're doing that already, Scott, without, without a defined objective. So, so we, everybody that comes knocking on the door with any interest in potentially purchasing and redeveloping the power plant gets lots of attention. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. This goal, B. Red, any comments?
I'd put a period after complete redevelopment of Morro Bay Power Plant, period. I don't know that we need to specifically mention all the other stuff, but that's just my way of shortening it.
I sort of took a different approach. I started by actually coming up with, one, two, three, four, five major objectives, each one somewhat different. And this one, I combined in what I saw was revitalization or redevelopment of commercial properties. So I have, and this is more of a long-term goal, and objectives tend to be 12 months to 18 months. So I put this one last because I had actually sort of prioritized my list. And I said, pursue opportunities and relationships that are likely to result in the revitalization or redevelopment of commercial properties. For example, the Morro Bay Power Plant, the Aquarium, and other Embarcadero lease sites or, and a boatyard. So I combined those as this is economic redevelopment and revitalization. So I took F and B. Because what I started with was developing and implementing strategies to increase TOT revenues, which I think is our focus for next year. And we had three objectives that related to that. So I, I had that as a major one. And then I had, I, this one I put last because while we're working on it, it's as they come up, we are working on those opportunities to redevelop and revitalize properties. And you're working on all of them as they come up, not just the power plant. So that was my logic.
So, all right. Matt?
I see your points, Marla. But the one thing that kind of sticks out to me is the singularity of this property. And perhaps, because you make a good point in combining those, I'm like, oh, wow, yeah, that's perfect to take that. And especially, but then however I was thinking about it, I'm like, okay, that, that one piece of property is singular and it's like, but it could. So I'm, I'm going back and forth here.
Yeah. I guess I didn't know how imminent this was in terms of, are we really going to be working on this next year? Or are you mostly monitoring and making sure that you're in touch and you're? I don't see this as an objective that's going to be accomplished in the next 12 to 18 months unless you know something I don't.
To some extent, we continue to work on this daily. I mean, I, we literally got a lead from the Governor's Office of Economic Development for a business that could, could locate there. And so I allocated staff time to put a response in, and it took several hours to respond. It was a good deal of information that was related to the site. And so we did that. I mean, that's, that type of stuff is going to continue to come up because people are aware that the site's available.
A little bit of.
Conversely, pardon me, if we felt as though it was a non-productive site, we could set a goal as saying, don't spend any time on the Morro Bay Power Plant because we want to focus on the rest of these goals. So to a certain degree, addressing it kind of reinforces the focus. I just think that's worthwhile stating.
Two things from my perspective on this is, one is that a number of these objectives are somewhat discreet in order, so that I can hand it to a certain person and say, hey, Ikani, F is you. Hey, Dave, B is you. And so some of the, so for example, the TOT ones are going to fall perhaps in three different categories: tourism management and economic development and community development. And those three, so putting all those together into one objective is, it is fine, but I appreciate being able to focus gin on a single bullet.
I kept them, I kept them separate. They're separate bullets.
Oh, great.
They're just.
Okay. And then, and then the, the way this is worded is, is don't sit on your rear. It doesn't say, take a bunch of time and go out there and try to gin up business, but if there's an opportunity or there's a relationship that presents itself, yes, do take that three hours that Scott took to pursue it. But what it doesn't tell me to do right now is to, Mr. Head and I have talked, but, you know, to go work independently with PG&E on the deed restrictions, to try to undo deed restrictions and those things, because at the end of the day, a future purchaser is going to do that far better than we could. But so, and I'm fine taking off, putting the P after power plant and taking off the rest of it.
I'll add a comment to what Marla had said and what Matt had said. To me, the goal is revitalization. It's not the power plant. Power plant's a big portion of it that we will continuously work on over the next few years in pieces. And so I like the goal of revitalization stated somewhat like you stated it, and then mentioning the areas that might be included in revitalization, because I do think that's the category that it belongs under. And whether that's, and these objectives are not going to be achievable in 12 months, but pieces of them will be achievable in 12 months.
And part of that is focus as well. Yeah. So I, Marla's had support the, the general direction of that. It's nice to include the Aquarium. I know that we, we do do that. You know, Scott, I know when you get the call, you respond to those things. But there again, I think it heightens the, the focus in which we're, we're looking at. So basically, I don't know if we want to, to look at how we can craft some of that language in there, or if we, was there a consensus more to keep this more singular? I kind of felt as though we could probably combine it, but with bullet statements. So Dave can, you know, hand out appropriately to different people.
So we do, we do have revitalization in F. That's.
Yep. So I'm combining B and F. So can you repeat your language, that language that you had on there?
Yes. Pursue opportunities and relationships that are likely to result in the revitalization or redevelopment of commercial properties. Including the Morro Bay Power Plant, the Aquarium, and other Embarcadero lease sites.
All right. You could add whatever.
Yeah.
I think those are the bullet points you're speaking about, Mayor. I like that. I do. It's general, and then it gets specific.
Right.
Would this, would it make sense to include the WWTP in this objective as well? Because there was some discussion at our joint meeting with the Planning Commission that the power plant and the WWTP are so geographically joined that they may be developed as a single unit.
And, you know, it's a good point, Red. We could, you know, put in, consider the WWTP wastewater treatment plant site as well. Thanks, Red.
Marla, could you read your first sentence again?
Sure. Pursue opportunities and relationships that are likely to result in the revitalization or redevelopment of commercial properties, including the Morro Bay Power Plant, and now we said the WWTP, the Aquarium, and other Embarcadero lease sites. And.
Good.
I also had, and the boatyard, but I don't know if you want to mention that also. Why not?
It's, yeah.
Put them all down.
Yeah. The ones we know about.
So, welcome, folks. We're going through our goals and objectives. We're on goal number one. We're refining some language on all those. We took public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and when we conclude, we'll take some more public comments. So thanks for coming. We'll make sure we open it up for your comments, and we'll, we'll have a chance to review everything that we've made language changes to and then share that with you, and then you can all make comments as you wish. Thanks.
I do have a question for everybody. In terms of the last sentence, in terms of economic development with these commercial properties that are going to be available, advocate for appropriate specialty uses such as an ambulatory medical plaza. Do we want to say something like advocate for, just keep it simple, advocate for appropriate specialty uses? Say something like advocate for appropriate specialty uses and not be limited to just a tourist-serving business, but could include X? I'm saying, I don't know if we want to just limit it and put the words in there, ambulatory medical plaza.
So right now, I've got all of that section not included. I think what we had was just what's shown on the screen as B at the top that's not strike through. That's what we currently have. And what I heard was take out all the rest of that descriptor, because that doesn't necessarily apply, since we've broadened this, that doesn't necessarily apply to the existing underused or vacant parcels in the commercial district. Does that make sense?
Comments, Red?
The medical plaza is a special interest of mine, but, but, but I don't think we need to specify it in what we're doing today.
True. Well, one idea, Red, in terms of looking at it as it's written right now, back to the idea of metrics, and I don't know what the metric is in there. But then we could, I mean, mentioning ambulatory medical service, tourist-serving business, none at all, or some, or mention of businesses? What do you think? Or anybody?
And I know Red's interest because I share it and his passion, obviously. I think, you know, just to piggyback on that, you know, you could then list everything that you might want to see in the Morro Bay Power Plant, and then list everything you might want to see in the Aquarium. And I guess this would be exclusive of all those, and that's the only reason it would be taken off. But knowing that it's a priority for the community, it's, it's.
Totally. And you could very easily say, these uses could include an ambulatory medical plaza.
You could. And, and it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be what the developer thinks is economically viable, matched with the needs of the community and what the community wants, and those two will come together somehow, so.
And we will have an opportunity to look at that and decide, so.
Yes, I won't forget.
So for your consideration, God, this is pretty much it on the screen. From, from the perspective of me listening to you and what am I doing and causing to happen, pursuing opportunities and relationships is different from taking proactive action. And so I've got, I kept, take proactive action to facilitate the revitalization of underused and vacant parcels in commercial districts. And just the distinction there to me is, is, Ikani, I want you to go identify the top 10 underused or unused parcels in our commercial districts, and then we're going to get a plan for those 10, and we're going to go after businesses to revitalize that, to plant there or something. Little different tone to me than pursue opportunities and relationships that present themselves, which is sort of where we are in the power plant. So where Scott and I are not scouring the world looking for businesses to move to the power plant, it's such a special nut. But we certainly could scour the county, looking for somebody to purchase and do something on that parcel at the intersection of Main and Beach Surf, the, the one on the corner. So a little distinction there if you're comfortable with that. Let me just read this out loud. Pursue opportunities and relationships that are likely to result in the revitalization and redevelopment of commercial properties, including the Morro Bay Power Plant, the existing wastewater treatment plant site, and the Morro Bay Aquarium lease site. Take proactive action to facilitate the revitalization of underused and vacant parcels in, maybe in all commercial districts.
And then A has language in there that basically says, hey, as we're working. Pardon me. So goal A has language in there that basically has language that, hey, as we're looking to revitalize, these are parameters in which we value. That's the way, that's the way I understand it. Yeah. Any other comments? Matt?
Measurability. How are we going to measure it?
Pardon me?
How are we going to say that we're doing it? And I see it says, take proactive action on what, are we going to use the Economic Development Plan again to say that we're going to do this? We're going to do this five times a year? In terms of the metric, how, how are we going to measure it?
I'm, I'm smiling about measurability and metrics for 50 reasons, one of which is most managers love them. Another is, some managers don't want to be, don't want to have them because they want to get measured. But one thing is, is that in this context, we're not, it's, it's not like a business where we're in the driver's seat and we can do it or not. Many of these things require willing partners. And so, so it would be really challenging to have an objective that said, this year, affect the redevelopment of the parcel at X, unless the council were going to allocate resources to have the city revitalize it.
And I totally understand that, David. And looking at that first sentence, pursue opportunities and relationships, comma, as listed within our Economic Development Plan, end, comma, that are likely to result. And by putting that in there, I understand it's, you need the other partner in there. But however, we have that, that plan, this, and it's not limited to that. But then that would be able to look back and say, okay, we are doing what we've asked and paid money to study. So that would be one metric.
I was just thinking, Matt, since we don't know what's in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, I hesitate to put it in here if this isn't part of it. I think we can, we can look to see if some of the undeveloped properties are in fact developed. So if, if we're, if they're successful, the staff is successful, we will start to see some businesses in town that weren't here before. So I hope we have a measure there.
You would also very appropriately ask me, hey, what have you guys done this quarter? What proactive action have you taken this quarter to facilitate the revitalization? And we might be able to produce the list of 10 parcels, the outreach we've done, those sort of things.
Right.
To, to hold, hold us accountable to working, to achieving your, your objectives.
Good point.
Red?
Is it necessary to include language in there relating to working with the Chamber of Commerce, or is that understood that that is part of your proactive activities?
In my estimation. In my estimation, that is covered in objective A, where it says, in considering all of the following working, objectives, work with local and regional businesses and groups. And that was sort of exactly the purpose of, of objective A, was to capture that in all of these things, we should be working with local businesses, with the chamber, with...
Any more comments on B? Okay. Next one is C, take appropriate action, including implementation of specific programs to increase shoulder season and off-season TOT producing visitor nights by 10% over FY17 levels. And Red, any comments on that one?
That looks like a measurable outcome to me, so I'm good with it.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I did a Marlis on this one. I broadened it to be inclusive and combined a number of them, and it, and it just says, I put down, evaluate and implement opportunities to increase TOT revenues, such as... Objective C, D, whatever. And so, the real goal to me is to see revenue enhancement through TOT occur, increases in TOT occur, and these are some of the specifics underneath it, so that's the way I looked at that, similar to your categorization.
I did, I did that exactly. I kept your, your three, but I put them under the broader, the broader objective of develop and implement strategies to increase TOT, and then listed those three, which you could apportion to different staff members. So, those are sub-objectives.
They are, I'm good either way. They're, they're all three there together. Clearly, they're all addressing TOT. If we want to have a, a, three sub-bullets under, under TOT, we can certainly do that, but...
It opens it up to allow for other opportunities to increase TOT than just those three bullets, and that's the reason I put it in a broader category.
What was some of that overarching language from...
I just, evaluate and implement opportunities to increase TOT revenues. You had one other word in there, I think, something like that.
No, including. Yeah. Although, we could say, not limited to, but including.
Including, but not limited to?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I've got that on the screen now. I was actually going back and forth on whether we should measure this over FY16 levels or 17 levels, and it was going to suggest measuring it over 16 levels. This is for C, for the off-season, because we have a full year of 16 completed, and that full year was under the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau. This has really been sort of a transition year, so I would, I would prefer, and frankly, as I looked at it, 10% is a lot in a year, the, and so, the measuring over 16 levels would be... So, I'd be more comfortable with that, so actually achieving it.
So, we have C, D, and E underneath, so we have the, basically evaluate and implement opportunities to increase TOT revenues, including but not limited to, and then C, D, and E?
So, this...
So, this might actually turn into C1, C2, and C3.
Exactly.
When we get to the formatting stage.
Okay.
Which will throw all of the staff tracking charts. Oh, my goodness, how will we refer to these? We obviously had goal to B.
Or not to B.
Now, what we...
So...
So, we should look at what was D then as next, because I think we're comfortable with C?
Any, any other comments? So, the way this is laid out, so we have all three of those, so we've got evaluate and implement opportunities to increase TOT revenues, including but not limited to, and that includes C, D, and E, and I'm looking from behind the screen, so everybody else isn't necessarily seeing it, but that means on, on our sheet would be D, E, and F. Are there any comments on the languages and the bullets that are underneath that? Matt? No? Red? Good? John? Marlis? Okay, good. So, then we'd move on to G, and then H?
So, F was removed, just, that's why you said G, I'm sure.
Right.
So, what was, we're looking at what was G, and that's actually going to be D now. So, this is G on parking.
Okay. So, starting off comments on this. Red?
I'm good with this.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I did it again. I had changed it to evaluate opportunities for new revenue sources, including but not limited to G, and then marijuana tax measures, other tax measures, and then I, it didn't make sense to have cost control in that, because this is really revenue, new revenue opportunities, and so I, I made that a last category with the same kind of wording. So, in essence, I said, evaluate opportunities for new revenue sources, including but not limited to, and I included G as one of those, marijuana tax as one, other tax measures, and then I had another that said, evaluate opportunities for cost controls that include, but are not limited to, staff review, whatever.
Marlis?
I, our thinking is along the same lines, because I wrote a separate cost control objective also. I'll just read you what mine is, and you can, "Develop an emergency financial plan if the city's fiscal situation worsens, or the additional revenues generated are insufficient, and then evaluate various cost control approaches to increase staff efficiencies and or reduce staff costs. Bring to council for consideration for FY201819." I think that cost control and looking at it next year and figuring out a way that we might be able to reduce costs, find efficiencies, is really important for subsequent years. I call, and I think you used the term emergency financial plan.
Actually, if I, if I could, based on the council's action two and a half weeks ago, which was subsequent to this, you directed the staff to cut $650,000 out of the budget over the next three years. You identified essentially the first $250,000, but what we said was, we need to have a community conversation about where the next $400,000 comes from, so maybe...
Over the next two years.
Over the next two years. So, maybe we should craft the, and it is most likely that we're going to have to cut 400 over the next two years, and that the results of revenue enhancement, the significant results of revenue enhancement are not going to start to kick in until after about three years. So, maybe we could re-craft this objective to acknowledge that we need to have a community conversation on what $400,000 to cut out of the budget over the next two years, include, you know, and look at staffing things, other, you know, program reductions, cost controls, that's a thought. Because otherwise, that decision of the council two and a half weeks ago won't be directly reflected in this objective, and it wouldn't, it'd be a good idea to have it directly reflected in here.
Matt, any comments on that? Marlis?
Yeah, I'm not sure how you're talking about rewording it, but...
And it might be just a separate goal, if that's where we're at, if we, you know, if we fine-tune what has been said already on this, this goal, and then we can discuss more detail, Dave, what you're talking about.
Yeah, because I...
Because I'm looking, I'm looking up at the, the board as we're typing things out. I know some, for our viewing audience, we don't quite have the same type of video that we would normally, so I should look up at the, the video or up here and see what we're doing.
If I heard you correctly, Dave, you're thinking that that's all we have to cut out of the budget, is 400 over the next two years, but is that really accurate?
Yes. I, I'm very comfortable that that is, that the 250 identified for this year, this coming year, and 200 the next two years will, I'm very comfortable, will have us in a, in a good position, and then we are going to have to cut another 650 over the following three years, unless our revenues start to kick in. And I think we don't want to necessarily jump off the bridge now and cut 1.3 million, because hopefully, we're going to do great work on the revenue side and, and other cost control side, so...
Yeah, and I wasn't talking about cutting at, at this point. This said, develop a plan for ideas for how we might cut in the future.
One of the discussions we, we did have is that we wanted to, in the year ahead, have a broader discussion about where the next 200 plus $200,000 of cuts come from. So, identifying that as an objective in this year's goals and objectives, I think, is a, is a, because it also alerts the community that we're going to be having a conversation about, about the next $400,000 bucks of cuts. So, I, maybe something, starting with considering council direction to identify $400,000 of cost reductions across FY19 and FY20, and then we can go into evaluate, you know, have a robust community conversation, and then talk about cost controls that's not limited to staffing review, something along those lines, and before we start crafting that, I'll send it back to you, if that's, if that's the right feel.
Yeah, so, we're kind of, let's jump back one and make sure we've kind of, we've, we've got the initial objective that we started with. Make sure we have that first, so we're...
So, back one and on the screen, E. So, D is, oh, shoot, this, sorry, this thing is odd. So, we can take this out, because we rolled it into D. So, E says, and this is the new revenue sources one, says, evaluate opportunities for new revenue sources, including but not limited to paid parking, possible marijuana tax measure, and other tax measures. And then, that was the previous one.
Okay. So, are we, I think, I think we got head nods that we're, we're good with that one.
Can we read the end of it? Is it just, did we want to add fee, marijuana tax and fees?
Marijuana-associated revenue measures?
Yes, that's good.
Revenues, take up measures.
And other tax measures.
And possibly reassessment of the city's fee structure, which is something the tax has been talking about, the tax. The staff has been talking about in the last couple of weeks, that, that based on, based on two things, based on minimum wage increasing 80%, 86% from 2014 to 2022, which drives a lot of our fees, and based on a significant increase to the cost of labor, we would be wa, and since our fees, in large part, are based on labor costs, Scott's fees are based on how much time it takes Whitney to work on a project, and how much Whitney costs, that considering a fee, adding fees into this would be a consideration.
I agree. I agree. I won't disagree. I was just, it got me thinking about, as we try to pursue opportunities of revitalization, we've also discussed incentives, and one of the incentives were the parking lieu fee that we'll be evaluating, so as we're trying to enhance revitalization, are there incentive measures, or is that something that council needs to have as a discussion on, on the goal as well? Or are we going to do that case by case? I'm kind of backing us up on that thought there.
We, we do have incentives in D.
Okay. All right. Okay. And I think D actually broadened a little bit to, to include, you know, commercial districts as well, right? I mean, as an example, you just talked about the lot on the corner of Beach and Main, you know, if there was something like that, are we going to be looking at incentives or something like that or not? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we still on, on F? Are we still discussing that one? Because I have just a, a bit of input there.
Okay.
If we, if we're just looking at potential cost reductions that are possibly related to meeting the needs of the calpers and/or pension increase, it leaves out possibly other revenue shortfall areas like capital budget funding, streets, measures, increases in wages and salaries, overtime, benefits, et cetera. So, that objective is just satisfying the calpers' need. I'm saying, let's let them dig as much as they can, and if they exceed that, because we have other needs, and if we're short on revenues, then we've got expense or cost reductions that can help produce a better bottom line. Does that make sense? Instead of just making it just the calpers' revenue need?
How would you propose articulating that in there?
I, let me do this. Consider, considering council direction to identify no less than 400,000 of cost reductions, develop a cost control and reduction plan to achieve these cuts, including a complete review of costs at all department levels. Not just staffing.
John, are you thinking about something like the emergency financial plan that we talked about before?
No, that was a separate comment that I made at the council meeting, that most cities, if something besides calpers hits next year, and all of a sudden, we find ourselves in dire straits, that there's a plan that the city will pull out that says, boom, hiring freeze implemented, travel freeze implemented, that's what I was referring to, and that was my next issue. Marlis brought it up, but I would suggest that we have that.
And that was why I added that. Because I think it's important to think about. We don't know what the financial future is going to look like, so we should have in place the ideas of how we might, you know, in an emergency situation, be able to cut costs.
So, I think the way this is worded now with Mr. Heding's input sends that signal to, to me, and would, would have us come back not just with $400,000 of cost reductions, but essentially a menu of other options beyond $400,000 when you say no less than. So, it says, considering council direction to identify no less than $400,000 of cost reductions across fiscal... across fiscal year '19 and '20. Develop a cost control and reduction plan to achieve these cuts, including a complete review of staff, review of staffing levels and nonlabor costs in all departments.
That that satisfies me.
Me too.
Red, Matt?
I, I guess I would just look at an emergency plan as a separate objective. So, okay, so this is not what you're, okay.
I wasn't there yet. I was going to agree with Marla that that would be an add-on because if, again, if we're suddenly hit in the middle of the year with lord knows what in terms of sudden hit, then there's something on the shelf we pull off that says, in this, these kinds of situations, here's what we do immediately to react to that. And now we're going to think about what else we need to do.
Okay, but what we have just added is leads into that is is a preliminary step. Is that the kind of thing?
Yeah, yes.
Any more comments?
I, I don't disagree at all with the benefit of having such a plan on the shelf. My question is, is the challenge of developing and publishing that plan? We can come up with those things fairly quickly. If we develop it and publish it, we might be asking for a whole lot of very concerned discussion in the community that might be for naught. For example, if staff's first $300,000 cuts is close the teen center and provide no general fund support to tourism, that's the kind of discussion that we're going to have. And we're going to develop that, and we're going to put it on a shelf. And we're going to, even if we might not need it. And I'm, I I wonder if going through that discussion in the community is essential in order to have those ideas on the shelf? Or if staff can develop those ideas, but we don't actually put it into the form of a council-approved plan? Because we are all going to hear about it even when we may not need to be implementing it. And and my my assessment is this year, we're pretty good. We've got a $4.2 million reserve right now, more than that, 4.6, 4.2, 4.6. We we have identified $250,000 of cuts for this coming year. We don't expect a recession this year. Our revenue, and we're planning for a recession next year. My sense is we're, we're pretty conservative right now. And I would not expect, based on what we've done, for the bottom to fall out in the next 12 months, in the next nine months before we see our next 10-year financial forecast.
So I want to honor that concern and and say, I agree. These are things that are out there and available that you could just benchmark and be happy to share a couple with you. And they're really low-hanging fruit things that I think any organization would do in a fiscal emergency, as I gave a couple of examples.
Hiring freeze.
Hiring freeze, travel freeze. I mean, those are just, you know, non-replacement of positions. And that's just until you look at the issue and then come up with a realistic plan to address it. But it it gets you moving immediately in terms of controlling and addressing the issue. And so it it wouldn't be for us, I think, anything more than the usual generic kinds of things that you see other organizations do routinely in fiscal crises. That's my input.
Matt? Yeah, Marla?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay. I'm all good with it as well. Thanks. Yeah, I'd agree. So we're, we're actually, so the framework for E, then, we're pretty, we're we're good with. Okay.
So we're comfortable with E as written and where it says, identify no less than, between the lines there is, work on some of these, you know, a menu of basic emergency actions to to help that no less than. Because we.
Actually, I was going to make it an F, but, you know, hey.
That's, yeah, so, or is it an F?
Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying actually add that objective.
That wouldn't be just for this year. It'd be to have on the shelf for any year in the future where you might have a fiscal emergency happen.
Yeah, so I think to the point, though, so is that to actually daylight the document or just have that as a development? We, we're, is it daylight the document and approve it from council? Then go through that exercise as we just discussed? Or be prepared to have a menu of emergency options?
The latter.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not related to the 400K because that's a CalPERS-issue specific thing that we're addressing. But when CalPERS hit, what, two months ago, this would be pulled off the shelf and implemented until such time as you had the specific objective we now have. Does that make sense? That's all. And again, the low-hanging fruit kinds of obvious things, like, don't go to Tahoe, you know, on these conferences, or Prague, or whatever.
So so you're saying adding F in that line with that language? So we're okay with that, then? So.
If you'd like to do that, and you'd want to keep it sort of in the tone that's between where I hear, you could essentially direct staff to develop a staff internal plan.
Yeah, okay. So since you're working on that, we're not really able to to view some of the other goals, some of the goals that we've, on goal number one, I'll just move over to, as you're doing that, Dave, I'll just using our sheet, go through goal number two, and we'll read that just to keep.
If actually you want to finish this off, has, is that simple enough?
All right, yeah, sure.
To inform future fiscal.
That's, yeah, that's what I was going to add. Looks good.
All right. Okay. Do we want to just go through this goal now concluded? Or do we want to do everything at the end for for the public comment? So we're going to go through all, let's just go through them at the end. We'll go through all the goals for everybody here, and then we can have public comment. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through this in the next little bit. I think the meat of our concerns, we're in goal number one as well. So we should be able to get through. Looks good. So goal number two, Dave?
My my sense, both from the council meeting on February 28th and from discussion since then, is there was, we were this close to approving two, three, and four as they were. And and we decided not to. So unless there are council specific things on two, three, and four, I recommend just see if there's any council concerns or input on two. And then if not.
Let's, let's go through goal number two. Any any input or comments on the goal description and/or objectives?
No.
Seeing, seeing none, we'll go on to goal number three. Goal number three, excuse me. So goal number two, just for the viewing audience, so goal number two is complete WRF project and one water program. That's goal number two, and we'll review all this when we conclude. Goal number three is improve infrastructure in public spaces. And any comments on, and I'll just, I'll read the description. On on this one is what I, so this important goal centers around substantially improving the city, the city's streets, multimodal transportation, infrastructure facilities and public spaces. The city does not currently have sufficient revenues to fund the capital improvement program required to make substantial and necessary infrastructure improvements. And therefore, this goal is contingent upon making significant progress on goal number one, achieve fiscal sustainability. And then it goes on to objectives in there. So any comments on objectives? And start with Red. None? Marla?
How about John?
John, so he shook his head, sorry.
Okay. I did have a question, and and then I have a slight change and one to add. So my question had to do with objective B. And I'm wondering where this came from? And is this a priority? And is this something that's paid for out of the harbor fund? Or is this general fund? This is for, to complete planning for rebuilding of the city-owned access alley to the commercial fish dock between the US CG station and Morro Bay Landing lease site. Work towards synchronizing city improvements with possible US CJ CG station and Morro Bay Landing lease site development. It's just more of a question.
Based on, so based on what's transpired since this time, I'd be very comfortable taking this objective out and completely and asking the HAB to prioritize all the various capital projects, which they're already doing in the harbor enterprise zone, instead of picking this specific one out.
That sounds good. Thanks, Marla.
And that provides space to add one.
Okay. Then next, I had on objective C, I rewrote to say, bring to council for information, consideration, and possible implementation a review of circulation and parking management plans. Because I see circulation as key to where you put parking. So I'd like to do both. And I said, well, options in the downtown and waterfront districts, period. I, it could include that, but it may not. And I don't know that we should be specifying the parking garages at this point. I don't know.
So the reason that's in there is, so first, it's in there as seek out and then bring to council for consideration, not it's going to happen, but for your consideration, parking garages or parking structures, I believe we should say. Reason it's in there is we have lots of discussion about should we, about we need parking structures? And the Market Plaza RFQ includes parking structures. And there are other property owners who have come to the city and said, are you interested in partnering with us on a parking structure? So what this tells me is to pursue that relationship and bring it to the council instead of saying, not a priority right now, and not sure if we really want to work on parking structures.
So I guess two things. So if someone, one, is it a goal to have a parking structure? And then, two, in previous goals, we were discussing work with businesses to revitalize, to do revitalization projects. That seems to me that that falls in there and that you would, you would have that working relationship other than setting a goal that we're, not to, not to say that we're, we have a goal of building a parking structure. I'm, I guess I'm, you see where I'm going with that? I get that there's someone that's interested in that, which is great. And we're, we're already framing that, yes, that is a goal. We are going to have those relationships to pursue revitalization projects. So.
The the primary issue has not been that there is somebody that might have interest in a parking structure. The primary issue is that the community, including the city council, has been very concerned about parking, about the amount of parking, and specifically parking related to other revitalization projects, such as the aquarium, such as the libertine, such as Market Plaza. And in numerous council meetings and other meetings, every time that comes up, the, a statement is made, where is the parking going to be? And then often, there is another statement of, wouldn't it be great if we had a parking structure? I'm not saying that that is a majority council opinion, but we have heard that in council and in many community things. And your staff needs to know, do you want us to, are, is your sense of the community that the community is interested in exploring parking structures or not? Because it it's sort of a binary choice. Should we be exploring exploring that? Or just say, you know, Morro Bay is not a parking structure town, and we're going to, we're going to do flat parking?
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I mean, when you, when I read the first sentence, it says parking management plans and options. So, I mean, it kind of covers it.
Exactly.
And we're good to go. And if the option is, someone says, hey, I'm interested in partnering with a parking garage, then we're, I think we're okay with that, right?
And I'll, I'll state upfront that I've been one that has said that. But also, in context of hearing a lot of concern about loss of viewshed and those kinds of issues. And I think we have to look at that. So, but I, I think that fits, yeah.
Red?
And I agree with Marla that circulation is an essential part of parking management. So I'd be very comfortable adding that language into the objective.
Idea, in terms of the description in goal three, the last line, this goal is contingent on making significant progress on goal one, achieve fiscal sustainability. Understanding that this infrastructure and public space improvement is, is that, is it, is it sufficient to say achieve fiscal sustainability to do this goal? Or should we put something that this goal, to accomplish this goal, it is revenue-dependent? Or or is it sufficient to say achieve fiscal sustainability will make this goal achievable?
Can we just go back to where we were to make sure we've got, everybody's agreed on the language for, sorry, for B? I just was, we're in the, so I think what I heard the council say is, end it after options in the downtown and waterfront districts.
Sure.
And. So it looks like that.
Yes. And circulation, I think, is.
It's in there, circulation, parking.
Okay.
And I'm trying not to press this point, but I just want to make sure. Is it the sense of the council that parking management plans might include parking structures?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Options, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, Matt, on your, I've got it up on the screen now. Our sense was that it says contention on making significant progress, but doesn't say we have to completely achieve goal number ones. So we're not necessarily not going to start on this until year eight after we've increased revenues 25%. But we do need to make some significant progress on that before we're going to have the revenues to do this. That's the way I read it.
I totally understand what you're saying, that these goals, this goal and the different, they're, as long as we have fiscal sustainability, we can do these things. I guess that's what I'm saying is, do we, because if we say we're going to do this every year, but we don't have the money, then we're not going to do it, then we're not accomplishing our goals. So do we have to say these goals are dependent on, and that's what I'm asking everybody, is it sufficient to say, as long as we have fiscal sustainability, these goals are achievable?
As I look at it, we don't have anything under this goal, really, that's substantial. We're basically saying we're not really going to be doing anything to improve infrastructure in public spaces aside from trying to get a ballot item to add a street, street improvement tax. Other than that, we're basically saying that we, at this point, don't have the money to take any major steps under this goal.
So that, I agree. And but without looking at the objectives, which is what we're going to do this year. If we look back at the goal, it says, the goal itself, improve infrastructure in public spaces, centers around substantially improving the city's streets. improving the city's streets, multimodal transportation infrastructure, facilities, and public spaces." We are not going to substantially improve any of those things until we make significant progress on Goal Number One. And that's the way, it sort of refers back to the goal. It modifies the goal, not the objectives.
Right.
And the objectives, therefore, are, are sort of baby steps or facilitation steps toward this goal until we have the revenues to actually accomplish it.
Right. So here's the one that I added. Dave's not gonna like this. I say that only because I know that you wanted to make sure that the objectives are over and above what we're normally doing. So I'll read it to you. Budget to ensure that basic maintenance and, or to ensure basic maintenance and cleanliness of the city's buildings and public spaces. And the reason I say that is that it's been an issue. Maintenance has been an issue. And I just want to make sure that we are addressing maintenance of the city's facilities, and that we have an opportunity in the budget process to, to tell you what those things are that need improvement, like replacement of the Surf Street steps and things of that sort. So that's, that's my comment.
So, so, in, in adding that, I mean, it's almost a budget objective as well, not just a goal.
Right.
So, basically, by agreeing to that goal, when we build our budget, that's gonna be built in there. Dave and the staff would come in and say, "Hey, to what degree are we servicing these? Do we need," and I'm saying this because we've had the discussion over the years, we need to allocate another person, actually, more hours and, and time to the, our public bathrooms, which we've done sequentially, I mean, continually, actually. I mean, we bumped it up and then bumped it up again. So I, I get the goal, but I also get that that's kind of inherent in the budget process.
I just wanted to make sure it happened. I just think maintenance is so important, and it's easy to neglect, and it's easy to overlook, and, and it, and then it creeps up on you. And I don't know how to write it or say it in such a way to make sure that we make it a priority.
John?
You know, I, I, I understand exactly where you're going, and, and I, I agree with it. I'm just trying to, in my mind, formulate a way to say it. Because if you, if you say, "Budget for it," that means you're gonna automatically allocate funds that may or may not be there to do this. And that really becomes a reprioritization of funding, and the consideration might be more answering that question. If one wants to improve maintenance and general, I think, whatever word you used...
I think I said cleanliness, maintenance and cleanliness.
There's a cost associated with that, and then a trade-off that has to come. And so it's not like new dollars are gonna be there for that. And so maybe it's, it's, look at opportunities to prioritize funding for whatever you are looking at, and rather than say, "Just budget," you're gonna budget for...
Yeah, I originally said, "Improve the maintenance."
That's, I'm just thinking out loud with you.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
My observation is, runs that same area, in that if we say, "Budget for this," then that sounds like very clear budget guidance.
Right.
We're a month away from the beginning of the budget process for, for us to put that emphasis in the context of all the other things. And I'll say, in the long term, that's, I'll just say, if you look at our labor force, the general fund labor force, there's only three areas that have a lot of people: police, fire, and maintenance. And if you want to start saving labor dollars, you're gonna have to go to one of those three to save labor dollars. There's a, there's a little bit of tweaks in there underneath the surface, maybe with a half a person here. But if we're talking about, you know, one or more FTE positions, that, that's, that down-the-road discussion.
So we're, we're doing a facilities, aren't we doing a facilities assessment right now?
We're doing a capital replacement assessment, which won't address this issue as much. It's gonna address, what's the usable life of this building? What needs to be spent on it to get it to its usable life, replace a roof at 10 years?
And so, in assessing facilities, such as bathrooms at Delmar versus a bathroom at The Rock, or Coleman, or stairs at Surf, Surf Street, how do we assess that and prioritize that? So each budget, you know, we're looking at our, and, you know, it's there, it's back there in our list of capital. How, how do, what are, what are the recommendations to say, "Hey, this, this we can put on the budget this year"? How does that, talk about that?
Yeah, two different, two different areas. One is capital replacement, that is, tear down and replace the bathroom at Delmar Park. The other is maintenance of existing facilities that are not at the end of the usable life, making sure the bathrooms are clean, the plumbing works, the trash is picked up, which I think is more in the area that Marla was, was getting towards versus, and so, in the budget process, we'll be able to do both. We'll be able to look at the, the capital replacement fund, how much is in there, and what is there, what is there enough to do this year? What can we do with the $225,000 that's in there? And then, in the operating budget, weighting various programs from tree trimming to police operations, to, to trash pickup, and maintenance, you know, cleanliness of, of public bathrooms.
So to revisit your additional goal, I guess I just need feedback from, from council on that as well, and where we're going with that?
Well, I think I made my point.
Yeah.
Maybe without an objective, but, you know, it, it would be nice to have something in there that talks about, it's not just maintenance. I was thinking about some of these low-level, small capital improvement projects, if you call replacing steps a capital improvement project.
So I'm, I guess I'm still...
I was looking, I guess, instead of budget, could we say, "evaluate and prioritize opportunities related to," whatever your category is.
Maintenance and cleanliness.
Maintenance and cleanliness.
And safety, in some cases.
Maintenance and cleanliness, and...
Hey, folks...
Determine costs associated with that, and a plan for achieving...
I'm expecting we're gonna be wrapping it up soon.
That's good.
In case they want to stay for public comment, sorry.
That's good.
That doesn't commit you to budgeting and...
No, right, evaluate.
No, we, we should, we should be, we should be wrapping it up pretty soon.
I've got something along the lines of, I'll just articulate it, and then we can see, of closely monitoring the cleanliness, you know, the, the maintenance of public-serving facilities, and come to council for reprioritization of resources if maintenance is substandard.
She was on...
That is, that is something that's, that fits in the things that we need to be doing this year, and that's watching the trash at The Rock very carefully, and understanding, do we need, like we just did this week, do we need to add a second dumpster there? Or, you know, that sort of thing, or the frequency of bathroom cleaning. If it's not right, then I need to come back to the council and say, "We need more money in the bathroom cleaning account, and here's where we recommend taking it out of."
She was talking about, you know, not only putting lipstick on the pig, but also possibly getting a new pig. And so, that was the other part of it.
I appreciate that, and that's gonna, that's gonna be in the capital budget that you're gonna, you're gonna see. So literally, we're gonna have, gonna show you a capital budget that's got 225K in it, and there'll be a list of projects. Hopefully, a few of them will cost less than 225K, and you'll get to prioritize that and move Surf Street stairs to the top, or Delmar bathroom to the top, and that'll come in the next, in May.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I'm happy with your language. Monitor.
All right.
Yeah.
So is there anything else on Goal Number Three? I'm missing something here.
I did take out on F, the last, "Such as park bathroom reconstruction." And I changed it to say, "Inventory, evaluate, and refresh existing programs for volunteer groups to assist in providing routine maintenance in the city." It sounded to me like we were turning over routine maintenance to volunteer groups. And I just felt, yes, they will assist in providing routine maintenance, such as adopt a park programs, while soliciting and facilitating additional volunteer group support for routine maintenance projects and small capital projects. But I don't think we are gonna expect them to pay for the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, there's a group that's interested in doing that, so I'm the one that put that in there specifically, and I'm aware of the group. So we're looking at trying to get a volunteer group, and not only have we tried, we've gotten one together to...
Really?
To see that happen.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I put it in there.
Oh, okay, well...
So I think that was on F.
Was that on three?
F. Three F?
Three F.
Okay, got it. Can you just state that again for me?
Inventory, evaluate, and refresh existing programs for volunteer groups to assist in providing routine maintenance in the city.
Yeah, I should, you left yours.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, and, and then my last comment in this is on E, and it's, "The RFQ process for the boatyard, and if required, a feasibility study." And I just said, "Why, if we don't get any interest in it, would we want to do a feasibility study?"
Yeah, that's, that's a great discussion, and we'll need council's direction on that. The current direction within council was, finish the market analysis that was done, then do a $50,000 feasibility study. So that's the current direction of the council. Then, we all sort of took an initial pause to work with Mr. Simons on his individualized idea, and then council directed a substep to release an RFQ. And so the council does have a decision that if that, and I agree with you, if that RFQ produces no market force that thinks that this is doable, then why would we do a feasibility study? And why not save the 50 grand and put it into something else?
And the 50,000 has been allocated...
Not spent, but allocated. And, and, and so I, I could certainly talk about right now, we, you could give direction on it now. We may not want to put that into the objective, or we might want to rephrase this objective to take out the feasibility study.
Well...
And then if you tell me, we'll send something to you that says, "Don't do the feasibility study until you get specific direction from the council," essentially to change your previous direction. Because the direction we have right now is, do the RFQ, and then if that doesn't work out, do a feasibility study.
So I guess if we complete the approved RFQ process, we evaluate, from there, we're gonna evaluate the outcomes of that prior to any decision on a feasibility study.
Right. Yep. So, so, "Complete the approved RFQ process for a marine services facility, Boat Yard, and bring to council for information and consideration of next steps prior to any decision on a feasibility study."
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. That concludes Goal Number Three, and then we can go on to Goal Number Four. Review and update significant land use plans. And I have some notes on this. Anything, any language for the description? The description of this is, "This important goal centers around completion of the city's general plan and LCP rewrite, and update of other essential land, land use documents. While the general plan is an important task, update other essential land use plans, and master plans is also a priority." And then we have goals or objectives A through F. Any comments on the description language? Matt?
Can I certainly comment that you're missing an A, the second to the last word is also a priority?
Also, Scott, I'm gonna ask you a question. Down on, on letter E, "Bring to council for adoption and rewrite of the secondary ordinance, based on changes." I mean, we did that last year. Is there a reason that it's in here like right now?
Because the state changed the law.
Okay.
He actually sent, we, you did, you adopted it. We sent it up to Coastal, and then January 1, they changed things. And so our ordinance was no longer consistent with state law. We told Coastal to stop what they were doing, don't waste your time, we have to update it again.
Okay.
And there's, yeah, so we need to bring it up to current status.
And is that gonna be, and we're gonna bring it up to current status, and that's gonna be included in the general plan, correct?
It'll be included in the zoning code update.
Okay, so that's, we're gonna do it, but then it's part of the larger process.
Yeah, it is, it is on the list of, of items to be included in the zoning code update for our consultant.
Okay, cool, appreciate it.
Sorry for the interruption. So I know we're gonna do public comment at the end, and some folks that were, have been waiting, were starting to leave, so I thought, let's just open it up for public comment. We can take their public comment, and then we can continue on. So public comment, come on up and, and let us know what's on your mind, and, and give us your thoughts, we appreciate it.
Are you guys leaving me?
Absolutely, everybody here, yeah. I know you, I know you're...
I'm gonna stay here till the end.
Yeah, so come on up. So just state your name for the...
Go now?
State your name for the record, and, and welcome.
I'm Meredith Bates. I live at 670 Napa Avenue in Morro Bay. Thank you so much, Jamie, for allowing us to speak now. Yeah, we've been here for a while.
Sorry about that. Yeah, we were gonna do it before and afterwards, but, yeah.
I know, I know. So I want to really thank the council for all the hard work you've been doing, and staff. This is amazing, the goal-setting process. And I'm, unfortunately, I was not there at the January 31 meeting. Apparently, it was really well-attended, and you probably got a lot of public participation, which is great, and I wish I had been there, but I wasn't, so I'm here today. And I was noticing how carefully you are managing the words of this document, and I love it. And Marla, thank you for pointing out certain things that I might misinterpret, interpret or someone else might misinterpret. And I know documents can be misleading, you have to have the right shells and wills and wherefores and heretofores and all that kind of stuff. And you guys are really focusing on that, so I, I so appreciate the detail. So I had a question about, in, in number F, on the WTF, number F. When I was looking at the report online, it talked about the ex, leasing the excess water, excess state water. I think it's in the second paragraph. I must be getting tired. And it talked about, the one I saw online, it said, "Lease or dispose of the excess water." And I was freaking out about disposing of water. So then, the new one, it's worded a little bit differently, if you'll notice. So I just don't quite know how things change from what's written online, what I might review online, to then what was printed out today. I mean, I'm watching you guys pour over every word, and then there was a change in the wording from what was online to, about this disposing of excess water. So I'm just curious how that process happens.
Dave can probably answer that, but we, obviously, yeah, we did go through some workshops, we did review this language a couple times. We did review this language a couple times now, and we're going through it. So actually, you bring up some good points, because we have been focused on words and, you know, in looking at that, I can see your point. And so, Dave, you want to respond to kind of some of the process and how we got there? And maybe, and I think we can and should address some of your concerns.
And just regarding that, I was freaking out about disposing of water.
Yeah.
Oh, man, we don't, we need our water.
Yeah. And Meredith, this is a much more informal, you know, kind of a work setting, so study session with this, so appreciate that. So Dave?
So I think, I think the good news is how it is in this final draft is we're all more comfortable with. And your observation is exactly why we changed it. So what this says is appropriately disposing of likely leasing, and certainly no appropriate disposal of state water will, will include dumping it anywhere. But what that, and it is actually intentionally slightly vague to allow the city to figure out what the most appropriate way to not use it ourselves is, and whether that is to completely give up our right to state water, or to lease it to another regional entity for a certain period of time. And it allows us some room to do that. So if, I think we might be comfortable with how it's written. Perhaps what you saw before was the prior draft, the initial draft or the second draft of these online?
You know, I don't know which particular, I looked at it yesterday with the one that was online. I don't know which version that was. But I, it's, what you're saying now sounds much more palatable.
I wonder if we could just change the word disposing, which does sound like throwing away to something like utilizing our allocation.
So we.
Reevaluating.
Or reevaluating, that's better. Reevaluating.
And I, you know, the other thing is likely leasing in parentheses.
Right.
You know, we should eliminate that assumption, because we need to evaluate what our options are.
Right. Reevaluating is better.
Thank you. And I had another comment regarding the one water policy that I don't really understand. My kind of little understanding is it might be a very worthwhile thing to pursue. My question would be if, if in our goals, we want to have a one water policy, who would develop the policy? When would it be developed? And how would we let the community know what it is? Those are just some, you don't have to answer now. Those are just some of my concerns about it, or comments regarding that particular matter. And one final thing, today is equal pay day, which means that women would really like to have equal pay, pay equity for the jobs that we do that are the same as men's. Today, we make 80 cents on the dollar. Back in the 70s, when I first started working, it was 59 cents on the dollar. So we've made some progress. I'm not expecting you to put it in the city goals, but I would like to make you aware that today is equal pay day.
Thank you, Meredith. Thanks. Anybody else for a public comment? Thanks for waiting, Carol. I know you were.
I'm going to be here till the end.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Carol Truestail. I live at 331 Kodiak Street, Morro Bay, California, North Morro Bay. I'd like to go back to goal number one, and I've been here since 1995. This essential goal recognizes the city is not currently able to fund all basic services and requirements at the level our community expects. The word expects sets you up for failure. So I'd like to say is entitled to. We're entitled to water, safety, and streets as citizens. And so I would like to see that change to, from expectation, because that leads to disappointment, to entitled to. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, I just need to revisit where we're at on that.
That one, there was actually a different word earlier also. I completely agree, but also my concern with entitled to is that is wide open to what people believe they're entitled to. Also, and Ms. Truestail just articulated, the entitlement is sort of limited to police, streets, and fire, I think.
Well, I understand that. The basics of any city is water, safety, and streets. That's just the fundamental basics.
For. And Carol, we should, we're kind of being informal, so if we're being informal, we should at least have you come to the mic, so people understand that, you know, there's somewhat of a conversation going on.
We're, we're like semantics kind of thing. And so there's basic.
Make sure, yeah, thank you.
There are basic things that a citizen is entitled to. So, you know, when you look at something versus expectation, it sets, it sets up high expectations for people. They're morally disappointed, just like having the potential of our police department being eliminated a couple, you know, last year type of thing. So I'd like to look at a different word in there rather than expects, or even, I understand, Mr. Buckingham, your issue with entitlement, but we need to come up, maybe look through this thesaurus and come up with a better, better wording for that, okay? That's what I'm asking.
Could we say, and I had mentioned this earlier, I do agree with that, that we will fund all basic services and requirements at the level appropriate for a community of our size.
That sounds good. I like that.
That's really what we're talking about.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hilli.
Okay. Thanks, Carol.
And if we could, on Ms. Bates's, we are on two F? And there was a.
So, yeah, so let's, let's wrap up for Ms. Bates, and then come on up, and yeah, come on up, yeah. Thanks.
I just thought you were moving on.
No. I've never been to one of these before.
So make sure the mic is right there for us, so we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Basically, I've never been to, you know, one of these before, and what's came to me is just a couple suggestions that I.
So can I interrupt you and ask you to state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Julie Kleagle.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Morro Bay.
Thank you.
425 Bonita. So, and I can write this down to you, Marla, but you're talking about the parking structure. And what, that's one of the problems that I remember when I visited over here, is the congestion. And I've really enjoyed, Capitola has the electric trolleys. Santa Barbara has the electric trolleys. And I'd really like to look at getting into something that will reduce the congestion, the time people are stuck in cars, they get very irritated. And if you're down there, people get out, and they're not very happy. And so it would really enhance the experience of Morro Bay, that they don't have to, you know, anyway, all that. And reduce the gas fumes. We have, you know, this is Morro Bay. It should be clean, and sometimes it's just really unpleasant because of the congestion down there, especially on the Embarcadero. But I just wanted to.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing about events. I really enjoy the nature and art and physicalness of Morro Bay. And it'd be really nice to get like a state or national competition, so we could enhance this area and bring people in, because the kite and the surfboard festivals are two of the biggest ones. And get away from like alcohol events, so we could have it more enhanced of what Morro Bay is.
Okay, thank you. So to address some of your comments, I think you're reducing fumes, and then what came to mind was circulation. And Marla's added circulation. I think it addresses kind of the trolley issue, because that would be exploring what circulation would come about. So that was, I think that addresses that and the gas fumes as well. And then the shoulder season objective is one that we would be able to explore what our options are for that, for those as well. Okay, thanks. And then back to, we were going to finish up with Meredith.
If we could just look at two F recommendation there. So let you turn to it, page three. And the issue was whether we say disposing of water, whether we should say likely leasing. So perhaps a good thing to do is after the M dash mark, Matt, is that a short dash is an M dash?
Yeah, N dash.
After the N dash, simply say, say including evaluating weaning off state water, period.
Okay, sounds good.
So allow the city to make a decision to achieve water independence, including evaluating weaning off of state water.
Do you want to say the, including the possible weaning off? The word possible, given the problematic nature of getting rid of state water, the good and bad sides of it. I mean, you want to, because if you say including weaning off water, that means we're going to do it. But as I look into what we've been talking about in the last number of months.
It's including evaluating.
There you go. Okay, I'll go with that.
And I like John's comment that we're reevaluating our appropriate, the appropriate use of our state water allocation, which means some, if you can get that in there also, because we don't necessarily have to get rid of it, we could sell it or lease it or, you know. So I'm sure you can wordsmith that.
We'll do that.
We can, we can come back and hit that as well? Okay, good. And then now we're moving on to, thanks, everybody. So now we're going on to review and update significant land use plans. And I think we, Matt, we started here, we were, you were going to say something, and you actually had some comments, and I walked out to grab our public comment speakers.
Yes, one comment I have, in the last sentence of the description, in front of the word priority, we need the letter A. That is also a priority. And, because I think, Jamie, you started by saying, did we have any comments about description? That was my only comment.
Yeah, perfect. Got it. Thank you.
But then, as we go into it, I had a question for Scott. When you're ready, let me know.
Okay. Any other questions about the description? Good to go? Okay, Matt?
Since you weren't here for that one, Jamie. I had asked Scott for letter E. I know last year, we had talked about the secondary unit ordinance. And then, so Scott just kind of filled us in, so maybe Scott, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Matt's question was, why are we bringing this back? And my answer was, well, on January 1, they changed state law. And so the ordinance that this council had adopted, and we sent off to Coastal for certification, became obsolete. We told Coastal to stop processing it, and we were going to update it and send it back through as part of our LCP update.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Red?
I'd like to propose an objective G. We have a lot of community interest in the Chevron property. And Chevron representatives have made several proposals to GPAC over the course of the years. And I sense that Chevron and some land conservancies are moving rapidly toward some sort of agreement. I would like to see the city be a, a party to the future of this, this property. So I would propose an objective that says that we will explore, in public meetings with city residents, opportunities to protect important scenic, recreational, natural, and agricultural resources on the Astero Marine Terminal site and surrounding lands in partnership with land conservation organizations.
And just for note, as kind of subcommittee members to the Chevron working group, that's, you know, it's kind of ongoing information. So the information about how the land conservancies and that's moving on is kind of a result of the comments. Yeah, thank you. Any other?
I was just going to say, good, good catch and great, great write-up. I just think the words are perfection. No, it's really a good catch, because that, that's really relevant, so I appreciate that.
Could you relate that perfection again for me, for my lack of perfectionist typing? I mean, I get, I get three quarters of it. Explore in public meetings with city residents.
I will just give you the language.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Oh, and, and may I add for public information that the current and first newsletter of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance has a very thorough discussion of the opportunities involved with this property. And I'm sure it's online, mbosa.org, and well worth everybody taking a look at that.
Okay, good. Thanks, Red. Objective number A, I, I put a target date on this. I know it says complete it, rewrite it, and approve it, and start it in FY '16. I just have a note in here to target date as, to coordinate with our objectives, also tied to the grants that there. I know we're focused on that. I just want to ensure that it's, it's actually in the objective. So complete the general plan, LCP rewrite, approved and started in FY '16, to coordinate with a target date. And I'm looking to you, Scott. I probably should ask you a little bit about this. I know you're, you're on this. I just want to, I just want to capture it.
The, the, the last deliverable item in the new schedule will be August of 2018. So.
Okay.
That would be the zoning.
Okay. So complete the general plan, LCP rewrite. How, it says approved and started in FY '16. I mean, I'm not really sure in the language, but to be, to be completed by August 2018?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want any latitude with that? Like October or something?
Well, we, we're.
Is it absolute? Oh, that's a drop dead date, isn't it? Yeah.
So it's, so you're going to, you have an item on your next agenda where we're going to talk about this, regular city council meeting. So, and then, and the date that I'm bringing forward to you is August of 2018. So.
Okay.
The idea would be to hit it early and be done by then.
Okay.
Not go past it.
And so the.
How about rewrite no later than August of 2018?
And so the zoning code is tied in with that as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All part of the process.
All right, thanks. And then before you leave, I've got two things. I just want to make sure you're here as I go through that. I had actually two things that I wrote up as well. One, I thought I had with infrastructure, but it comes, the one objective, and it could be tied to advisory board objectives. I just want to throw this out there. Sitting on the Slocog board, every year, we see the Caltrans grant come and go. So there's a window of opportunities for grant that we, in my view, we aren't applying for that. So here's what I wrote up. Research, develop, and submit an application to complete for the Caltrans Sustainability, Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant due November 2017. The planning project being a complete streets project from Main, for Main Street, starting at State Parks to Zanzibar. That would be the, the goal proposal. It could be a PWAAB objective, but the planning grant is due 2000, in November 2017. All we have to do is have our Public Works Advisory Board make sure that we're facilitating an application for that, and then it would be completely funded. And then in 2018, 19, with the funds, we could, we could do a complete streets study that would include Main Street from State Park all the way to Zanzibar. So I crafted that up. So, so both, one question is putting on an objective, and then putting on an objective for the PWAAB board. And I'm, so there's kind of two questions. I'm looking at staff, either or. And I know you're not PWAAB, but.
I would give one comment. We've applied to the grant, we've applied for the grant a couple of times and been unfortunately unsuccessful.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll be do better in the future. And, yeah, I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a pretty, pretty specific project, which, you know, is in line with the things that oftentimes those grants are approved for. It would run through Rob's folks.
Okay.
Scott, since you've prepared one of those, the, so my only concern here is, I haven't had the opportunity to assess workload of the staff as we add things on right now. So in your experience, is adding this to Rob's plate for November of this year, I just don't know what goes into applying for that grant, the.
So the last time we did it, was when, you guys may recall, we had Geska. She did mostly grant writing for us.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for reminding.
Started working, Rob hired her originally, and then when we pulled CD out, community development, she was working for me before she left, and now is a private grant writer. There are, the reason I point this out is there are those opportunities out there, if Rob didn't have the in-house resources to write it, that he could go out and hire someone to do it. to do it. And it's fairly reasonable, the amount of time that it took to write our last grant application, including all the follow-up that Geska was doing, going back and forth with Caltrans and checking in. It took about three weeks, you know, on a part-time basis, but they're working on their stuff to, to, to put it together.
So, yeah, that's a, that's kind of a budgetary thing as well, so for consideration.
Maren, how about if we bring this to you as a discrete item in the budget process with a price tag associated with it?
Yeah.
And we can look at it in the budget process and say, do we want to allocate funds to that? Sort, it's sort of like the maintenance question of, that way we can deal with it, because my...
Got one more.
Based on what Rob just said, my guess is that...
I'm going to wait for my meeting. Sorry. So let me, let me do one more, sorry. So the last one I had was begin dialogue with San Luis Obispo Coastal School District Board on the city general plan LCP update and possible zoning updates to affect revitalization opportunities such as affordable housing, education facilities, and medical center at Moro, at Moro Elementary. I know that's part of the...
So we've, we've had ongoing outreach to their facility planners on our update. I was a little unsure about this at our, at the joint meeting when it was brought up, but we've actually reached out to them about three different times now.
Okay.
And we did it again after that comment was raised, because we didn't get responses last time.
Okay.
So we are actively doing that.
Okay.
So we could, we will continue to actively do that, so if you add it, we'll continue to do it, whether it's on there or not. And it's...
Just one more, one more. Let me, let me finish up this, and then we'll do it. Sorry.
What is for Scott?
So Scott, you're leaving?
I'm leaving right now to go to the planning.
Okay, sorry.
Can I stand up?
Yes, please. Sorry. Scott.
This should be good.
Scott, you know my name. There's scuttlebutt on the street about the aquarium not filing the proper documentation for a grant or something. I'd like to stop the scuttlebutt. Can you tell me what's going on with that application?
I, I can do that after Scott steps out, if you'd like.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any...
I'm checking, I'm checking that project.
I, I want to stop it before it gets out of hand, and if you've got that on one of your goals, it's not going to look pretty.
Okay. All right, Scott, thanks. All right, thank you. So Dave can respond to that. Thanks, Carol.
So let's do the Delmar Elementary first, if we could. So I've met with Brian Pinkerton and others from the school district four or five times, specifically talked about Delmar Elementary. There is zero interest on their part in selling it.
I understand.
They're, they're, they are very...
Dave, are we talking Moro or Delmar?
Moro Elementary.
Did I say Moro, Delmar? I'm sorry, Moro Elementary. There is, there is no interest in selling it. There is openness to proposals for long-term lease. So if we added something, I wouldn't put it in the context of begin discussions with the school district. I'd put in the context of proactively pursue those opportunities for that site. Because it's the kind of thing where it's sitting near a school district, it's fine with it, they're not going to do, they're not going to do anything. But if we found somebody and brought them to the table that said, hey, we'll lease it for 50 years and do this to it, the school district would be open to that.
So basically, that's kind of back into a different, that's not necessarily in the planning and land use, that's kind of proactively pursuing options, which, yeah, which is what we've already talked about in goal number one. Yeah. The only thing I added in here, you know, I added...
How about if we add Moro Elementary to that list in goal number one that had aquarium, power plant, wastewater plant?
Yeah, that's the more. Okay, that'd be good.
Is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, can I respond to Ms. Truesdale?
And then, yeah, and then you want to respond to that?
So, Ms. Truesdale? The, and community, the, I'm not sure what the current scuttlebutt is, it changes often. The, the, there are no issues at all that I know of in the aquarium's loan application. Their loan has been sort of contingently approved by the USDA, awaiting a feasibility study. And contingently approved is actually really good. They didn't say no way. What they said is go do a feasibility study that demonstrates that this project will work, and if your feasibility study is positive, then we are disposed to approve your loan. So the current, the current status is the USDA has essentially given them contingent approval for the loan, and now the aquarium is out raising funds for a feasibility study to take back to the USDA to get the loan approved, hopefully.
So I can say that to people and just say, no, that's not true. This is what's going on?
Absolutely. And I'd be happy to, to write that down and send it to you, and so we can...
I don't...
Okay, great.
All right, thanks. So I think we covered the comments, and I think we, the little added remarks, and so we're still on goal number four. Any other? So I think I had one more note here. Bring to council consideration code enforcement outreach. The only thing I put in here in D, it says, bring to council for consideration results of code enforcement outreach on existing codes related to fences, hedges, boat and RV, trailer parking, storage on streets and neighborhoods, determine whether to keep, modify, related existing ordinances. And I have in there that we, you know, start the rewrite process. I think that was what the expectation was for the community. Hey, we've had the discussion, we know it's out there, what are we going to do about it? So I, I think it's imperative that we add the language in there, that we modify related existing ordinance and start the, the code rewrite process.
If I could add in there too, because we had such significant public interest with that, in terms of putting in there, begin the rewrite process with, with community input.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, aren't we going to get the results of the outreach before the next fiscal year, so even before July 1?
I'm not sure if we're going to get it to you that soon.
Oh, okay.
Just where we are with general plan, with sign ordinance, with other items.
Okay, because I, it is done, right? I mean, the results are...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but with the important outreach as we bring it to the council, and with all of the other outreach items that are going on, we're, we're just jam-packed, whether it's marijuana outreach or other, other things. And so I, I don't want to commit to getting that to you before the 1st of July, just as we're looking at the council calendar in the next few months. My, when it says, so when I say determine whether to keep or modify related ordinances, and then perhaps period, rewrite if required?
I think rewrite is the expectation.
Well, unless we keep the existing ordinances. If the council's decision is to keep the existing ordinance, then no rewrite involved. If the council's decision is to modify the existing ordinance...
Well, just say modify.
Says keep or modify.
Keep, modify, okay. Okay, so we'll, I'll interpret modify as rewrite as necessary.
Yeah. If the council says modify, we're going to go out and rewrite it, modify it.
Good to go. That's goal number four. So do we want to just start with goal number one? And we've, we've gone through goal number ones, so we want to just start and kind of scroll through these things that we've got, and do we, do we have any of these other ones that we need to, to...
I transitioned from capturing everything on the screen to writing it. So perhaps we should put these into a document, and we'll put them on a consent calendar for the next meeting instead of trying to adopt them right now.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
I would second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
So, any other comments on the goals and objectives in this discussion, to the left or to the right? Great discussion, and great, thanks for the public comments. Sorry we missed two people that didn't stay, would have wanted to capture that as well, but we got good feedback on the diligence taking place. So this special meeting is, there's two items on the agenda, discussion adoption of 2017, 18 city goals and program objectives. We've completed that. Our next item on the agenda is closed session item, conference with legal, with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And so we would, if we're concluded with the goals part of this, we would conclude this part of the meeting, and we'd reconvene to City Hall to start our closed session meeting. I will open it up for public comment at this time for this item. So just want to make sure that there's, if there is anybody, Carol, I know you're here, but if there's anybody that's, I'd open it for public comment. Okay, saying none, then we can conclude this portion of the meeting and reconvene to 595 Harbor Street, City Hall, and we'll start our closed session. John, do you have a comment?
Just a comment, closing comment on, on process and timing. The goals and objectives drive the budget for the year, the operating budget and capital budget. And so I know this was a, maybe a unique year, but if we could look at possibly a process to finish a little earlier, so that staff would have time to incorporate things into the budget, that would be good, so.
Okay.
It just seemed like it went on a long time. Maybe it's just me, but...
This, this part here?
Not today. I'm just talking about the goals this year, just getting all the goals done. But there was a lot of good input, and I'm not saying the process was bad, I'm just trying to look at ways of expediting the timeliness for staff to not be suddenly trying to incorporate everything into the budget.
Yeah, note taken. I think this exercise here has been kind of beneficial. I think we've done it, having, I think even the one, we've had it a couple times where we've actually discussed it and tried to say, okay, we captured it, but we're actually riding on the go and doing that. So maybe we'd be able to incorporate that next year as well and have all our stuff ready. Okay. Okay, with that, we'll conclude this portion of the meeting, and we'll reconvene over at the City Hall, 595 Harbor Street. Thank you.